The regular meeting of Beaverton City Councils. City Recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Duggar.
Here.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg.
Here.
Counselor Hassan.
Here.
Counselor Kimmy. Counselor Teeter.
Here.
Counselor Tivnan.
Here.
And Mayor Beatty is absent.
Our first order of business tonight is an executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will turn to open session. The Beaverton City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.66. The governing body to carry on labor negotiations. By Oregon law, the media is excluded from these deliberations. Designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No final decision will be made in executive session. After the end of the executive session, sorry, executive session at approximately 6:00 PM or so, we will return to the open session.
Can the recorder call the, oh, sorry? Just waiting for the cameras to turn on. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
I'm here.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg.
Here.
Counselor Hassan.
Here.
Counselor Kimmy.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Counselor Tivnan.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here. Okay, tonight, we're going to start our meeting with visitor comment period. Then we have proclamations. We have a city manager's report this evening. We have an intense consent agenda item. We have two presentations from the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board and an update on our Good Neighbor Agreement for our shelter. We have three public hearings, four first readings, and a work session. So it's going to be a long evening, so let's just keep that in mind, colleagues, as we're moving through these items. But tonight, we'll start with public record as reminder, I mean, public comment. Public comment is an essential part of local government business, and it's important for us to hear directly from you. However, in order to help us meet compliance with Oregon's open meeting laws, this is not a time for dialogue, rather, a time for us to listen. With that, we have five people pre-signed up to go. We have one person virtual, and we'll let him go first. And it looks like he is in the attendees section, ready to go. Darwish, when you are ready to go, you will have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This is Darwish Zakel, the Chair for the Darwish Advisory Board. But today, I'm here at the individual capacity as a community leader. I would like to start with some invitation, some events that's happening in the Beaverton area. I would like to encourage the council and the mayor to attend. One of the event is here at the Beaverton Round on the 22nd of June, which is for the recognition of and celebrating refugees. We have invited some other officials from the county. It would be good to the council, be there and show as the Beaverton is equitable and belonging city to everyone. It would really be meaningful for the Beavertonians to see their councilors attendees. There's also another event happening at the Portland, which is also on the June 20th. It's the same concept. We are going to take a walk to celebrate the Refugee Day, and also, there are going to be performances and some speakers. The third event also, I would like to bring it up to the council's attention, is the celebration of Eid for Muslims, the Cedar Hill Park on the 23rd, same as like last Eid we did it. I would really encourage everyone to participate and also spread the word about these events that's happening. I just want to highlight, these events are important, meaning hundreds and thousands of community members are coming together in most of the Beaverton, in the Beaverton area. I think it's really important to see the elected official, everyone to show and to really acknowledge the diverse culture and just to show up there, and I think it's really important. That's all I had, and nothing else. I wanted to just invite everybody, and I hope to consider that, and I would hopefully to share the flyers. I planned to come in person and had some other items that I would like to discuss, but unfortunately, my schedule conflict couldn't come. So I would share the flyers also, and then please share it and join us in this event. Thank you so much for taking the time and giving the time to speak today.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Alexis and on deck, Laili, Anna, and Jeremy. Alexis, when you're ready, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Alexis Laitip. I am here to be a representative for not only myself and my fellow Relay Resource workers. As a non-binary person, I have struggled with unfair treatment in my past jobs where I didn't have a union. I was treated poorly for speaking up for others. I was lied to about the work I would be doing before I was hired. I was even at a non-union company after two years and a great performance review given a 10 cent raise. Finally, a little over two years ago, I found Relay. I was freshly moved out of my parents' home and needed a higher wage to live in a new city. Relay has been a great place that's full of diversity and equal opportunity. I am understood, a concept that I have failed to find at many other places. With the union, I find safety and peace of mind, that I have people to back me up and that I can speak up for myself and others without realization. I have job security and security that I won't feel broke or lose my job or if I have health issues. I can count on regular raises. I have PTSD, which causes me to have panic attacks and paranoia, which affects my ability to work in a public-facing job. Union janitorial work is a great fit for me. I'm here to push for you to vote no on the resolution to switch to a non-union company. Union-based jobs have higher job satisfaction, lower turnover rates. It's an obvious reason why going with one would be a right choice for Beaverton. I hope my story and the stories of my fellow coworkers leads you to the right choice. Thank you for your time.
Is this already on? Okay. Hello, my name is Laili Shes, and I've been working as a weekend janitor at the new public safety center for a year. I'm a Beaverton resident. This is my first job. I can only work part-time due to my disability, but. I'm sorry, I'm a little anxious. But under the Oregon Forward Contractor Law, the new company is not required to hire part-time workers like me. Working for the Beaverton, working for the city of Beaverton has been a huge blessing to me and has changed my life drastically since I started working at Relay. My job has helped me in the battle of the grief of the loss of my mom to brain cancer. I'm able to stay busy and not be in a state of depression due to the traumatic loss. I have also, it has also been a great resource for me when it comes to employment and being able to explore my own independence, and it has been given, and it has given me the financial resources I need to get out of the foster care group home system and live on my own and not be so dependent on my social security income. I'm finally to a point where I can afford my own apartment and maintain it. I've worked hard to keep my employment, and if the city council votes tonight to switch to a non-union contractor that only hires full-time workers, it is a major setback to the progress towards my goal of independence. For the sake of me and other part-time workers, please don't switch to a non-union janitorial company. Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay. It's okay. Anna?
Wow. Okay, so Mayor Beatty and council members, my name's Anna Robertson. I'm a lead organizer with SEIU 49. I'm the organizer for the Relay Resources Janitors, and I serve on the Board of Trustees with the Local 49 Health and Welfare Trust. I've been deeply involved in our work to obtain quality, affordable healthcare coverage for SEIU janitors, including those employed by Relay. Oregon law requires that janitors not suffer a reduction in healthcare benefits when they transition from one Oregon Forward contractor to another. The Department of Administrative Services is responsible for acquiring summary plan descriptions, which are the legally binding health plan documents, as well as the cost to the employees of the coverage from each contractor. DAS then reviews these plans to ensure that disabled Oregon workers would have equivalent health benefits. Although Northwest Success failed to provide the summary plan description to DAS as required by law, even reviewing the shorter document provided, we could immediately ascertain that the health plan offered by Northwest Success was inferior to the city of Beaverton janitor's current plan and that it was more expensive to cover their kids. As such, we did not expect to be here today. Unfortunately, we learned a couple days ago that it appears as if the employee premiums were not taken into account when comparing the health plans. Northwest Success charges employees $904 per month to cover one child and appears to charge $2,261 per month to cover more than one child under their family coverage option. Relay charges janitors $40 per month for all kids. DAS also determined, did determine that Northwest Success's benefits are worse than Relay's, which means that janitors faced higher costs when obtaining medical, dental, and vision services. In response to this, Northwest Success sent DAS a letter saying they would pay for the city of Beaverton janitor's Cobra coverage and would purchase equivalent health plans from Kaiser at some point in the future. There's a lot of hidden costs buried in health plan documents that can cause serious financial hardship, especially to people with disabilities who have ongoing medical needs. That's why it's so important, and it's a legal requirement, that Oregon Forward companies provide the summary plan description to DAS to review before these types of contractor transitions that the city of Beaverton is contemplating can be approved. From SEIU's perspective, we believe it was a reckless lapse in judgment and not in adherence to Oregon law to consider a promise about a future health plan purchase as sufficient to prove that the city of Beaverton janitors would not suffer a loss in health benefits as a result of the transition. It appears that DAS and Northwest Success may believe that it's possible for Northwest Success to pay for the Cobra benefits for the city of Beaverton, but it's not. As a multi-employer Taft-Hartley trust, the SEIU trust can only accept payments for health and welfare coverage from employees who are party to a collective bargaining agreement with Local 49 and who have signed a participation agreement that binds them to the policies and procedures of the trust. The trust would not be able to legally receive Cobra payments for health benefits from any employer that doesn't meet this criteria, and Northwest Success does not. We also have serious concerns about Northwest Success following through on promises they make once they secure a contract. For example, Northwest Success recently assured the city of Portland that they would intermediation with Local 49 regarding a legal dispute. They made this assurance to secure their contract to clean Portland Parks and Recreation Buildings, but shortly after Northwest Success received confirmation from the city of Portland that their contract had been extended, they informed SEIU that they were rescinding their promise to engage in mediation. So you cannot trust what they promised you, and they have not provided legally binding healthcare plan documents. Deciding today to approve a July 1st transition from Relay to Northwest Success for your janitorial services puts janitors at risk of losing affordable healthcare coverage for themselves and their children and losing all the other important benefits that janitors have explained in their testimony to this council as well as two weeks ago. The council should vote to delay any contractor transition until it can be assured that your constituents who clean city buildings will not be hurt by this decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just for posterity, I gave you her remaining minute. It's not something I normally do, but given just that she needed it, I'm going to let you have it today.
Thank you.
Jeremy?
Thank you. Mayor and council, my name's Jeremy Simmer. I am a researcher and policy analyst with SEIU Local 49. I'm also speaking to Agenda Bill 24057. There is more than one promise that Northwest Success has made and then broken while bidding on a service contract. In 2021, as part of an effort to win a contract at the city of Portland, Northwest Success committed to respect its workers' decisions to form a union if they so chose and not challenge them as they formed a union. After a majority of their employees, 71% at that time, had signed union authorization cards and asked their employer to recognize the union, they refused to honor their commitment. In a letter to the city of Portland related to this issue, Northwest Success suggested that its employees with disabilities may not have, quote-unquote, "the capacity" to choose to form a union. The company's attorney wrote, and I quote, "Given the rehabilitative nature of Oregon Forward contractors and the types of disabilities those contractors' employees might have, there are potential capacity issues related to labor organizing, campaigns, and voting." We were alarmed to learn that Northwest Success, which claims to lift up people with disabilities, publicly questioned its employees' capacity to make decisions for themselves because they have disabilities. In response to that claim, Disability Rights Oregon, the state's leading advocacy organization in this arena, said, quote, "For any Oregon Forward contractor to suggest that people with disabilities cannot make decisions about their own terms of employment or exercise their rights as workers is extremely troubling." I'm going to try to be brief. I have a few essential other things that I really think that you should consider before voting on this contract. Last year, a contract between the city of Portland and Northwest Success was terminated after the company was found, quote, "unable to meet expectations," according to a news report. Downtown restrooms became, quote, "a health and safety hazard," unquote. Other articles reported that the Montloma County Behavioral Resource Center was temporarily shut down due to allegations that employees of Northwest Success and two other contractors had used cannabis and cocaine at the center and had questionable sexual relationships with coworkers. I should note, this is at a center that was, that is meant to serve people with addiction and try to help them get out of those problems. Around the same time, public records showed that Northwest Success's project manager at the Behavioral Health Resource Center lost a set of keys to the building. The following day, a program participant covertly spent the night in a locked building in an electrical closet to which only employees of Northwest Success and its associated firm, DPI Security, had the keys. Two days later, Montloma County had to call an emergency meeting to take inventory of all their keys and, quote, "eliminate security risks," unquote. So we ask, are you confident that you want to hand over the keys to this building and to the city of Beaverton facilities to this company? For the reasons described tonight by Relay members and in the last session, we believe rushing to vote yes this evening on what I believe is on your consent agenda, I'm not sure, would be harmful to current and future janitors who clean city of Beaverton facilities, but will also put the city at unnecessary risk. SEIU and other pro-worker organizations have collaborated with local governments across the country to craft policies that are legally sound, that foster quality jobs, and support families and sustainable economic development, to provide the best value to local residents for their tax dollars. We would gladly provide resources to help shape such a policy that would work for the city of Beaverton. I must say, in final, we urge you to vote no and to direct staff to temporarily extend the current contract just long enough to allow a full consideration of these issues and to chart a better course. We urge you in the strongest possible terms to vote no on this service contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is proclamation for Juneteenth, and I've asked Counselor Tivnan to read that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll now read this proclamation on behalf of the office of the mayor of the city of Beaverton. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Independence Day, commemorates the events of June 19, 1865, when Major General Gordon Granger led Union soldiers into Galveston, Texas, bringing news as the Civil War had ended and that the Emancipation Proclamation had declared all enslaved people free nearly two and a half years earlier. And whereas, as one of the oldest American holidays, Juneteenth commemorates formerly enslaved individuals and their descendants and has historically been a time of prayer, reflection, and family reunion. And whereas, while July 4, 1776, represents the birth of the United States of America and commemorates its independence from British rule, it did not offer independence to enslaved people. And whereas, although the Juneteenth celebration is specific to the emancipation of African descendants, its message promotes the continued freedom and economic prosperity of individuals from all races, colors, creeds, and cultures, and improves upon the nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, America must never forget or repeat its vivid and tragic events of African-American history, which exposed the dehumanizing impact of racial violence, from chattel enslavement to convict leasing, from thousands of lynchings to racial massacres like Tulsa, Oklahoma in 1921 and Rosewood, Florida in 1923, from segregation to voter disenfranchisement, from mass incarceration to wrongfully inflicted violence upon the innocent who fought for freedom as captured by media in Selma, Alabama, at the Edmund Pettus Bridge. And whereas, historically, Juneteenth observances have not always received acknowledgement and recognition through Juneteenth, though Juneteenth is a critical component of American history as it marks a turning point in the nation and a step towards equality. And whereas, on June 1, 2021, the Oregon State Senate unanimously passed House Bill 2168, making Juneteenth an official holiday in Oregon. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates the strength and resolve of Black and African-Americans throughout our history and serves as an opportunity to celebrate the rich and numerous contributions of Black and African-Americans. And whereas, this year marks the 159th commemoration of Juneteenth. Now therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, Mayor, the city of Beaverton, we do hereby proclaim June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth, and in the city of Beaverton, and call this observance to the attention of all of our community members.
Thank you. Okay, next, I will take the consent agenda, but we're going to pull for separate conversation, 24052 and 24057. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we'll let you do your city manager report. Just trying to move us along, so.
Thank you, Mayor. We can get the slides up really quick. I'll be brief. We have five community updates this evening. All right, if we can move to the next slide, I'd like to just give a quick progress update on the year-round shelter. As many of you know, we are building a new year-round shelter low barrier off of southwest Beaverton Hillsdale Highway near 217. And construction right now is estimated to be completed by late fall, and then shortly thereafter, we'll have a transition between the temporary shelter and the new shelter. Once that happens, the temporary shelter will be immediately closed, and we will be planning for that site some much-needed senior housing, so we're looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. You'll hear a little bit more about this with respect to the Good Neighbor Agreements later this evening through our presentation. The next slide is just a great reminder, we are in summer and it's time to read with the library, and so we are now launching our summer reading program between now and August 15. And the library has reading logs, so we encourage you to come pick those up. And if you need some details, if you check out that website, beavertonlibrary.org/asp. And for those adults that like to read too, we have a program for you, and we've got that website up there, beavertonlibrary.org/asp. Next slide. So we have some signature community events that we wanted to remind you about. Our favorite, Ten Tiny Dances, is Saturday, July 13. National Night Out is August 6, and Beaverton Night Market, 10-year anniversary celebration is August 17. And we also have some great community events that we want to make a note of. Pride Beaverton, of course, is coming up really soon, Sunday, June 30. The Legendary Makers Market, that's July 26 through 28. The India Festival, that's Sunday, August 11, and Beaverton Music Fest, and that is August 24. And then our next slide is just to remind folks that the city does a lot of support around our local artists and the art that they create. And so we want to remind folks that are interested in participating that we have a number of grants that are intended to support individuals, organizations, and projects that have opportunities for current and emerging artists. And so we have awards about, then a variety of deadlines, and so we just want to encourage people to go to beavertonorgan.gov art if you want to get some more information to apply. And then last, and the most important is that, if we go to the next slide, we just want to remind the community that we've established a new office of equity and inclusion, and that really helps to promote our strategic vision around diversity, equity, and inclusion, but more importantly, belonging initiatives across all of our city operations. And we really do have a goal to be culturally responsive to all the needs of the residents, and we want to show that through our programming, but more important, we want to make sure that when you come to Beaverton, you have a true sense of belonging and that we do thrive as a welcoming and equitable community. And so with that, I also want to remind the community that you can check out more information on our equity office in the Your City edition that's coming your way, so please look for that in the mail. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll take the consent agenda of minus 24052 and 24057.
Let's make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's consent? Okay, seen none. Will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Sorry. Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with 24052, the investment policy conversation. Counselor Hassan?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to try to keep this brief, so thank you for indulging me. I was chatting with one of my board colleague friends from another government agency, and they were sharing that they had used their investment policy to create what they called environmental, social, and governance practices. So in the spirit of time and flexibility and trying to work with the city manager's office, I asked Jenny if I could share that language with her. It's really around ensuring that we're using those practices. It would not have to be effective in this investment policy, but since we are looking to update our investment policy, the investment policy is a place where our values do show up. What kind of investments we want to have, what places we want to invest in that are climate-friendly, that are humanitarian-focused. So just want to share that perspective, see if you have any comments or questions. Otherwise, I don't know if you want to add anything, Jenny. I know this will come back to us soon.
I'll just clarify with the council. So we're in the process of doing an RFP. We'll have that launched for our investment advisors. They're going to be reviewing our existing policy, and so this item will come back to you sometime within the next six months or two for your review. It'll either be a work session and/or an action item. We'll get some recommendations. We can certainly fold Counselor Hassan's interest in that, and the council will have an opportunity then to weigh in and provide language if they'd like. But in the time being, I believe that you can approve the investment policy before you. We do follow the state's corporate investments with, around treasuries and agencies, so you are in good hands with respect to that, but you will have another bite at this apple, so if that helps to clarify things.
Thank you. I do know it was quite the hot topic conversation in the state legislature. I personally watched many of the hearings in which they talked about this and brought the state treasurer in, so I would highly recommend the council do the same thing. The state treasurer answered a lot of questions that I had around the state's investment. And again, we don't control PERS. That's a state investment. That's our largest fund is PERS, and we don't have any ability to influence that whatsoever. And so it is really with what's left in our portfolio. I feel at this point pretty. I feel at this point pretty comfortable because I don't know what level of government you were talking to, but was it somebody that had an endowment? Like a school? Yeah, so community colleges have a much different profile than we do, and they are investing millions and millions and millions of dollars more than us, and so I'm interested in the language they provided, but it's probably not an apples-to-apples comparison. I would be more interested in what other cities are doing and what our state is doing. That's who we share more in line with than a college, but yeah, that's what I'd like to see when it comes back to us. Any other thoughts on this, Counselor, whatever your name is? Hart Mayor Prigg?
Counselor Hassan, so are you saying, like, you're, because we review annually, you're saying it's something for like future investment? Okay, I just wanted to clarify, so no concern to move forward tonight? Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, will the recorder call the roll? We need a motion first, does someone want to make a motion?
I will make the motion to approve Agenda Bill Investment Policy. Second. 24052, thank you.
Second.
I appreciate everyone trying to get this down quickly, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on this agenda item? Seen none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hart Mayor Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tibnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, Agenda Bill 24057, Counselor Hassan?
Ooh, I'm really spicing things up tonight, thank you. Obviously, I've been moved from last time's testimony and tonight's testimony, and I just want to ask some of the questions of our city manager and our city attorney. You know, as a human resources person, I work in human resources professionally, it's really important to me that we're really ensuring that we are taking care of our people and that we're taking care of our employees. And so I guess my first question to Jenny and/or the city attorney is, you know, what I heard tonight is that, that the new, that there is an expect, so what I understand is that there's an expectation that the benefits and pay will be comparable to what is offered, and I'm hearing otherwise tonight, so can I just get some clarification on that?
The city attorney can weigh in, but we have a certification letter from the state that certifies that, and that is in your pocket before you. The city attorney may want to add to that. We're not in the position to determine whether the state has made a mistake or not, but we do have certification from them, and that is what's guiding us moving forward. Bill, I don't know if you want to add to that?
It's a state-run program, and the state made the determination that Jenny's referring to, the city manager's referring to.
So is the certification guaranteeing that those benefits will be carried over to those employees?
Essentially, yes, that's what it's meant to do, to certify that these are equivalent benefits and wages.
Is there any link?
I'll just add a little bit more, that it did take more than one study to get the information that allowed them to reach that conclusion. That portion is true, that there's, you know, but DAS is the one that runs the program, DAS did the evaluation, and DAS came up with the certification that's being referred to.
And so what about part-time employees? Is it different, does DAS say that they honor full-time and part-time, like what, what is that?
They need to be offered the position in the new organization, so that carries over?
So if you're part-time, you'd be offered part-time?
I don't know for certainty on that, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, I just, from a values perspective, I support, I want us to change contracts, I want us to follow the rules, but I believe as an institution, we have the ability to say, we expect at the highest level, whether that's a value statement that we include in our contracts, whatever that looks like, I don't want to feel like we are potentially underpaying or under anything, and it, I mean, I feel like I'm hearing it, but what does that guarantee look like? And I just, again, I think of our values as a council around like taking care of people, doing the right thing, whether folks will have benefits, we're about to go through this right now, or my benefits are going to change over, it's a nightmare, I don't recommend it, but I guess I just want to feel like we know that these employees are truly being taken care of, and I'm just trying to navigate whether that's truly happening or not.
Let me jump in and help you, because all of that is not an ask. How do we guarantee that this happens, is what I think Counselor Hassan is asking?
I think we can work with DAS to ensure that that happens, and they are the ones that monitor most closely what is going on at the company level.
What's our recourse if we find that it's not being, so if we...
That's essentially a breach of contract, because what you're saying is you're not doing what you're required to do by law, and therefore, you're in breach of a contract that is with us. But DAS would be the one that would be best able to evaluate whether or not these wages and benefits are functionally equivalent.
So what is, what is our role here in saying this? Because I hear, I hear what you're saying, I also see everyone behind you shaking their head no, and I also know that I've been doing this for a long time. How do we hold DAS accountable? Because I agree with Counselor Hassan, it's a value statement for our council, and I also understand why we're in this contract negotiation, and could you also tell the council, like, how did we pick this firm?
Well, let me start with the last first, because that is, how did we pick this firm? Again, this is a, Oregon Forward is a state-of-Oregon program run through Department of Administrative Services, DAS, and they come up with a list of qualified rehabilitation organizations that people with disabilities can work with, and they set up a table that you can look online, and you say, in this example, I'm looking for janitorial services, I'm in Washington County, which entities are qualified, which ones are certified to do work in this area? That list is something that DAS provides, it's not something that we provide. We're required to look at that list and use contractors, provided they can meet our needs. What happened in this case, I know that, I want to say that there are about five organizations that come up on that list when you say, I want janitorial services in Oregon. One of the things that happens, for example, is there'll be small companies, and they say, you have way too much square footage than what we can handle, so we ended up with realistically two viable alternatives, Relay and the current proposal for Northwest Success. At that point, it becomes a question of, can you meet our needs? We have, Relay's the incumbent, we've had managerial, I mean, there's history there, and then there's price, you can look at price. And so those are the things that were looked at in terms of making the decision, also understanding that there is this provision in Oregon law that says that when you leave from one Oregon Forward provider, and you go to another Oregon Forward provider, the employees at the incumbent need to be given the opportunity to work at the other organization, at the new, new company. So we have met all of those standards. If, I just, I'll stop there, because I know, I don't think I answered all of the questions that you asked.
Can, can this council legally consider in that criteria that you just told us, whether they're union or not? Is that a decision this council can, can?
Currently, at this time, the DAS system at the state level is not set up to do that, because even look at it from the other side, could another city council and some other alternative universe say, we don't want any union? Now, I'm looking at my list, and I'm seeing that there's someone who's qualified to provide services at this organization, and I say, well, we're not going to choose them. We've just now X-ed out a group of people that are otherwise qualified to provide you services that are disabled people, you're totally going against the grain of, this is a program that's supposed to give opportunity to disabled folks. And it's a state-run program, and so currently, as the program is set up at the state level, either administrative rules or state statutes would need to be changed in order to allow what you're asking to happen.
And I want to make sure that Counselor Hassan's questions get asked, and I want to put words in your mouth, but I think what she's asking for is how do we ensure that this transition happens? Like, what is our, is that?
I mean, I think I'm really hesitant about this contract, and I would like us to consider a value statement in the future, in future contracts that represents our values, which I'm happy to write or us write together, because I think we've got some values that, I think of the carpenters who've shown up and talked about their experiences, we can't fix people not showing up on a job and paying them. But we can certainly make sure that the contractors or the contracts that we want to work, that we put in our values to ensure that that is at a high level.
And we do have value statements in our contracting stuff, so perhaps the city manager could come back in a future meeting with some examples. We've had this conversation since I've been on the council a few times, so I do know it exists, and that's not going to solve the problem today, so I think, I, again, I'm concerned, along with how do we make sure that like, these people, our janitors that have serviced our building, don't fall through the cracks?
I think that moves over from the legal issue over to an operational issue that's going to be the city manager, but it's probably going to entail some members of staff making sure that, checking in with DAS and asking for, you know, I want to know the facts of what's happened here. But it's not necessarily a legal issue, so I'm going to have you direct that question to city manager in terms of, but I think it's a supervision, operational, looking into what exactly is happening and how am I sure that it's worked out the way we want it to?
We absolutely can do that, the direction of council, if they would like us to check in and provide a status report, but we are being in a position to try to interpret something. The question is, what do you have in terms of the legality of moving forward if there is something that you're disputing? And so that will end up being punted back to the attorney's office, but for now, if council's comfortable, we're more than happy to put a team together to be monitoring it, and we're subject to whatever the information that's provided to us from the state, because of course, we don't have authority over the state, but I'm sure they'll accommodate us in terms of our questions, that we can report back to the council.
Actually, is this on this topic? Is this old? Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, a few questions. The substantially the same benefit language in Oregon Forward, is that just for the employees, or does that include their families as well, their dependents?
The benefits that you have at one organization need to transfer to the new organization, so if you had a family plan at one, you have to have a family plan at the other one, as an example.
But like from a cost perspective, because we heard feedback from representatives that there could be potentially, for one child, a $900 increase versus their current contract, and for multiple dependents, a $2,000 increase, so what I'm trying to understand is, is that accurate?
Well, I don't know the facts in terms of the cost of the plans at the two janitorial companies, I just don't know that. But in terms of what the law is intended to do, is say, like-for-like. So if your plan was, you have to pay $30 a month for this coverage, then you pay $30 a month for that same coverage, is what I would tell from a legal standpoint, is what's supposed to happen under this transfer of employees from one Oregon Forward contractor to another, due to a change in contracting.
And then a couple other questions, and I think this is a version, so tell me you've already answered this, but like this DAS review, the state's conducting, if they find that the benefits and the wages are not substantially equal, is that, is that the breach of contract you were talking about, where we pull out?
I think that, it becomes a breach of contract, in my opinion, because what's happening is you're supposed, by law, you're supposed to have this program, and if you don't have this program, then you're not obeying all laws, which is a pretty common provision in a contract, everything that's related to this contract, you have to do lawfully. Now, from a super technical standpoint, breach, usually you have an opportunity to cure, but, but, yeah, you're heading down the road, I think we're both talking about.
In the Oregon Forward program, so there's a set of, the framework that we have, that's a set of minimum standards, are there additional things we could add on top of that?
You can have reasonable performance standards, which is common, but we, we have that for the janitorial services as an example of, probably more detail they need, but I'll finish it. This, we consider to be a Class A office building, you need to clean it to that level, that standard. There might be another portion of another building someplace where you go, this isn't Class A, you just, this needs to be clean and tidy, but, you know, it's not that level of cleanliness. So we set standards for the different portions of the buildings that we have.
A couple weeks ago, I advocated, just as Counselor Hassan did, that we add like some strong, just like we did for our investment for our capital program, like a criteria, a scoring criteria. I'm not sure that I can support this tonight. I ask you all to think about a pause, I think that's a reasonable ask, because I, like, I just want these things in, if we can put these things in the contract that we, that our part-time workers are guaranteed part-time, that our, that their wages are exact, you know, at least exactly the same, that their benefits and their cost structure, that's what really keeps, you know, keeps me up, is like, is the cost structure, like, if your wages are the same, but your benefits cost $900 more a month, you're not making the same money, and that is really harmful for our people, and so I, I think I can support a temporary pause while we, while we work through that and get that guaranteed, and if we do, I'll be the first person to vote yes, because I do like the aspect, I think it's good work, I just think, in order for my values to be satisfied, that's what I need, so that's where I'm at.
Counselor Tibnan?
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, within the constraints of the law, how much leeway do we have regarding procurement of the contractor as it relates to, we have a shortlist we can choose from, can we request that they submit proposals to, we are not allowed to do that?
No, we can't even negotiate much on price.
So you just have to kind of almost blindly pick off this list based on whatever information they preload in of qualifications, and then check references?
Yeah, and you can ask about ability to meet our needs, as an example of, you have too many square feet, we can't, we're not a company that's ready to take on hundreds of thousands of square feet.
But we're essentially only reliant on references giving us a very well-rounded amount of information to help us make an informed decision, on their, on the actual quality and performance.
Right.
Okay.
And that work was done by staff, and I think you're going to hear more about that perhaps.
And so in reading the packet and understanding, we heard from the city of Sherwood, they seem to be very happy with them, but we've heard some testimony tonight that speaks to maybe some facets of their organization, their value system, the way they're operated that didn't necessarily come out during the reference check.
Right, and, and I think that you have to remember, it's a state-run program, and what factors are we allowed to consider is really run by state administrative rules and state statutes.
Okay, okay.
There's very little discretion here, it's, it's meant to be a program that promotes the employment of disabled folks, and, and...
I understand that.
That's the objective of it, and it, it curtails the authority of the government agencies to have discretion, it's like, you must go here, and we tell you the facts.
I understand that, but we have discretion amongst the individual nonprofits that are on the list, so we can choose between them, and we can use our own manner of discernment, reading the, the information they give us, but also checking references and getting outside feedback to help us make an informed decision from the folks that are on that list.
Right.
And so that gets me to the next question, which was, we talked about breach of contract, and from, I, my confidence in this decision is going down, especially around the part-time worker, transference over, and as it relates to the family benefit, and is that cost going to be equivalent? And if it isn't, in, in the instance that that, that happens, I wrote down, you said, it's a breach of contract, in my opinion, which, you know, to me, it's like there, that leads to a question of, what would the cost ramifications or implications be of getting to a place where we believe it's a breach of contract, maybe they don't, do we then have costs attached to legal fees and working our way through getting to a place where we feel good about the, the level of service and, and operational aspects that we, as a council, I believe are, you know, transmitting that matter?
Well, one of the things that would happen is that, again, this is a program that's run by DAS, and your authority to just cancel the contract because you feel like your service level's not right, is actually mediated by DAS in the Oregon Forward program, and they try to work and, and come to some sort of way to get you back to the service level that you want. It's, it's a very constrained program in terms of the authority of the city to do things other than what the program is set up to do by DAS. So even the, the more traditional way you might proceed with a breach of contract, you would say, we think they're in breach, and then DAS would come in, and they would try to deal with, can we make the problem go away by adjusting something somewhere? So it's a very constrained program, you're, you're, yeah.
Okay, well, in light of all, and thank you very much for that information, so I agree with Counselor Duggar, I don't feel I have the confidence to make the decision today to support this contract. I think that, just, I see here written- I think that, just, I see here written, Oregon Forward Contractor Relay has for many years provided services, how many years has it been? Do we know?
Dan Weinheimer, Assistant City Manager, I believe it's been about 17 years.
Okay, that's what I thought, I remember hearing that.
Yeah, we've had some ongoing challenges around servicing the buildings, and so that is part of the impetus for bringing this forward, is to try to make sure we do have appropriate coverage within the Oregon Forward program, right? So we are constrained, we do attempt to remediate those issues and work with the management within Relay, and it's challenging because there really isn't a stick, as it were, you know, because there really isn't a way to clawback and to get better service in many cases, because we are constrained by the number of qualified providers that can serve the number of buildings we have, the square footage, you know, the, the use of our buildings being public buildings, you know, so it, it is challenging to find alternatives, and without that
Sounds like it.
Actual alternative, it's, it's really hard to, to make a change.
Yeah, and, and to that stick you mentioned, so the thing that, I, I wrote, I wrote down comments on every visitor that has provided them, going back and reviewing them from last time, and, and what we heard tonight, these are individuals that have worked for the city for, in some cases, their entire career, they, they have voiced over and over again how much they love working at our facilities, and if I, if the stick of, we're going to terminate the contract and we're moving forward with another, isn't enough to provide incentives to fix issues that the city is having, I don't know what is. So in my mind, having this pause and seeing if we can sort that out, and if we can, then revisiting this again, that just seems like the, like a reasonable course to take, that's just my personal viewpoint on it. But yeah, just, just to reiterate, I, I think after hearing everything that I've heard, the path tonight doesn't seem like the path that I could support.
Might be able to respond, we do have, as part of the DAS process, there is giving notice to the company, and then doing the analysis around pay and those kinds of things, because you can't, kind of can't get that information from the successor entity about wage and those kinds of comparables until you've got that, you've gotten to that point of making a change. And so I'm not sure that we would have coverage for janitorial in this case without moving forward, and that's not to say we have to move forward, and I'm not trying to, to strong-arm, I'm just saying like right now, then we have to negotiate and come up with an alternative, I think, between Oregon Forward program and, and if there are other ways we can provide that coverage for janitorial. And I believe the alternative could be staff providing that, we'd have to hire our own staff, and so it's something to be mindful of.
Thank you.
Council Hartman Prig?
Yeah, I'm curious to Councilor Tivnan's point about if, you know, the notice of non-renewal, like when that happened, did it really come to the table and say, like, what can we do to secure a renewal? You know, like was, was there something that happened at that point then?
I believe there was discussions, I wasn't involved directly in that, but I believe there were some discussions, and I'm not sure that they were terribly involved or fruitful, and so, you know, the, part of the challenge has been, like I said, trying to be, get response to concerns we've raised for years, and that's not been something that management and Relay has been terribly interested in until now, and obviously, like, we do have their attention, which I think is your point, and, you know, it hasn't necessarily been extended conversation, it was more, hey, and, and so, a little bit surprised, I guess, in the sense of how this is, the public comment has come forward, but I can reach back to staff and find out the details, I just don't have that information at the moment.
Yeah, and, you know, at the last public comment from a couple weeks ago, we heard a lot of, you know, please don't take it out on the employees, right? And so we are hearing so much from our, from the employees and not from Relay, and that, that's tough, because I would hope that they would come and fight for their employees too, and I think it's great that their union is here and that, that mechanism is there for these individuals, I think, like the longevity, like, there's so much here that we as a council talk about as being our values, of having a living wage, to hear that difference in the insurance, that, you know, we heard a lot of stories about, about medication, right? So then you, you take the story about like a dependent costing that much more, you, you take the medication, I just don't have confidence that the employees will be taken care of in the way that we would expect them to be, and even some of the language in, about it feels a little like uncertain, right? Because there's something about the 90-day period that, then I'm not sure what happens after that, right? So I, and I understand that, like, hey, it is July 18th, but I, I'm in line with my colleagues that have spoken so far, I, I would not be confident in supporting a move to Northwest Success at this point with everything we've heard.
Okay, so we need to figure something out, there's not enough votes to move this contract forward for all of the reasons the council said. I am frustrated for many categories, this feels very like the parking situation again, where we're being forced to vote up against something on a deadline. Can the city attorney let us know, could we do a 30-day extension to, with the RFP process and how we're doing, to like get some of these questions around particularly the healthcare answered?
It requires two parties to agree to an extension, so, you know, I mean, I think the city would be open to the idea as long as it's only a 30-day extension, it doesn't bind us for an entire year.
Yeah.
But I have no idea what Relay really wants to do in terms of that offer, and I don't know if anyone in this room has the authority to represent what Relay wants to do from a legal standpoint.
So what is our, what is the byproduct? Could we have staff clean the buildings, like, would that violate our union contract?
We would have to hire staff, we don't have, I mean, we don't have janitorial staff because we have had real life for so many years, so we have to hire or find an alternative, and, and we're constrained, so I think we would, we would have to scramble to figure that out in the short term, but the idea right now, the way the, the system is meant to, to work is this 90-day period of offering essentially at or equal or better salary and, and benefit to the employee, and, you know, the idea that they transition, they've got the experience and all those things, so that
I mean, I would hope that someone from Relay's executive team is watching this, and I think it will show your true values if we ask you for a 30-day extension and you refuse, so I think that's what the council needs to make this decision, and I think if, if they refuse, I think we'll have to have an emergency session of the city council to figure out, and I think we'll have to all agree to that as an outcome of tonight, is that if they refuse a 30-day extension, we're going to have to meet again in an emergency session this week to figure out what our next options are. I also think this would be a great time to get DAS involved and have them mediate, like you said, to help us truly understand that it's apples to apples. As a disabled veteran that had to work part-time for a lot of years when I was in, like recovering, I understand the aspect of working part-time, I also understand that medical costs escalate, and so we need to have great assurance, I mean, I'm sure, that's what the council's largely concerned about is the medical coverage.
And I just want to be clear, DAS did all of the analysis on this financial, and, and that was the assurance to move forward, without, without that assurance, we would not have brought this forward, we couldn't have moved forward, and so they've done the analysis and, and said that Northwest Success is at or, or better in terms of wage and benefit, so I'm not sure that, I'm happy to reach out to DAS.
But I mean, if what we're hearing is that it's a $2,000 cost escalation, I don't think that could be true, and so I think it's okay for us to push back, I think it's okay to say we want to look under the hood. And if you need a delegation of the council to, to be in that conversation, I'm happy to appoint a small subcommittee, but I think that the legal team and you could do it, and we'll commit, if they don't do it, we'll all call an emergency meeting of the city council and bring us all back in here to discuss what's next. Does that seem fair to the council? Okay, I'm sorry, do you, I didn't see your name.
So I think procedurally where we are is we're just basically pulling this and resetting it for a different date, this agenda, is that?
Yeah, I need to give Councilor Teeter an opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, thanks. No, I just want to say, I feel confident that the city followed the right processes here, we felt like we weren't giving, getting the services that the city needed, so we went to Oregon Forward, there is one other option, the city chose it, approved by DAS. I would be comfortable, not happy, but comfortable approving the contract tonight. I know that's not the majority opinion, so I'm happy to, to come back again on a special meeting if we need to do that, to double-check, it's just a really bad situation all around, I do feel like the city's followed the right process.
And, and to be clear, none of our critiques are about the city staff, it's trying to understand a process that we have no control over, that we're forced to implement, and this unfortunately happens to the city council all the time, that we're implementing state, metro, county rules, that we don't have an input in making the framework, but I do think this 30-day pause is warranted for the council to make sure, and it's not a reflection of you, it's not a reflection of the staff or the legal analysis, but we're, we're the ones being asked to vote, and I don't think that we have all the information we need to make this decision, and I'm sorry, it's pushing us into an uncomfortable space.
And I appreciate that, I would just close by saying, staff absolutely shares your frustration with this program.
Okay, so from, what do we need to do?
I don't know the schedule off the top of my head.
No, 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 like, do we need to?
I think you're moving it to a date certain to come back, but maybe city manager has an idea.
I mean, you know, we need it like a month-ish, however it works with the schedule.
Yeah, you'll be taking a break, we'll see what we can do within the next couple of weeks, and if we can't, then it will come back a little bit later, we will come up with a game plan and we'll let you know when we need to engage you.
Okay, do we need to do anything since it was on consent, it was pulled from consent, do we even need to vote on it? There wasn't a motion?
I don't think you need to vote on it, but you do want a consensus at least shown that, yeah, we're on board with this, it can be the thumbs up process, but
Yeah, there's consensus, we all literally said it, so I feel confident.
Okay, we're good, it'll come back sometime in, in the near future.
Okay, all right, we will make this happen, all right, we are on to two presentations this evening, so if you'd like to leave and that was your agenda, please, by all means, enjoy your evening, we will have the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board set up and get ready as the room is transitioning.
Hello, everyone, thank you so much for being here this evening, my name is Malani, and I'm joined by Avni, Seema, Katie, Lokeeth, and we are here on behalf of Mayor Beatty's Youth Advisory Board. We're really excited to talk to you tonight about what we've learned this year regarding youth in Beaverton, so I'll give it off to Seema to start us off.
Hi, so the whole reason we're here tonight is because we want to really talk about the importance of youth voices, even though youth aren't able to vote, we're still very much affected by the decisions that you guys make in this very room, and so we think youth, we see my generation being very involved with politics on international, national, and just city level, and we're just very aware, and we're also obviously very opinionated, so we want to have those spaces where we can talk about our opinions and have them be heard, and so MEAP is a really great place for youth to make sure that there is not a gap between the city and the youth in our community.
So what exactly is MEAP? The Mayor's Youth Advisory Board is a group of high school students from across Beaverton who strive to lead change in our community by representing our peers to the city. We do this by communicating youth ideas, priorities, and concerns to the mayor in order to help integrate the voice of our fellow teens into the city government. This board enables us to engage in leadership, organization, and direct action skills by providing us with a platform to connect with our, connect with other youth, host events, and spread awareness.
So what does MEAP do? MEAP convenes monthly meetings where members learn about the city government and provide feedback on city projects, ensuring that some youth voices are heard and considered into local decisions, but beyond this, we've also held donation drives. For example, recently, we partnered with St. Cecilia School to collect toiletries over a two-week period, which we subsequently donated to the Beaverton Resource Center to support those in need. And this year, we also hosted a youth summit where young leaders and keynote speakers from around the city met to discuss the pressing issues that affect our community. Such activities empower the youth in our community to take action and help us improve this beautiful city.
So a little more on the youth summit, this year for our annual youth summit, we had 50 youth join us from across all Beaverton high schools in the district, and this allowed these youths to connect with various local nonprofits such as the League of Conservation Voters, Youth Line, and League of Women Voters. Representatives from these organizations came to us and spoke about what their organizations do, and also presented opportunities for the youth to further their passions and get involved, and on the, on the whole, was a great opportunity to enjoy, introduce MEAP to the youth and kind of just talk to them more about how they envision the city. Another part of the youth summit was our facilitated discussion, for these discussions, we essentially sat down with the youth and discussed what does a youth-oriented city look like in their minds. In this discussion, we split it up to four main categories discussing how they envision neighborhoods, youth voice, sustainability, and well-being within the city.
So first of all, we talked about neighborhoods, and something that a lot of our attendees brought up is like community spaces and having spaces for teens to socialize with one another, and just going outside are like social circles that we've established, and examples of these spaces are like libraries and parks. Another thing that's really important to youth is, a lot of us aren't able to drive yet, so a public transportation and walkable and bikeable cities are very important, I mean, I like took the triment here, so it does really affect us, and another thing that is important is youth housing, as we go out into the real world and we're becoming adults, it's hard to navigate the housing market and the costs are rising every year, so it would be nice to have more resources to navigate all those things.
We had also discussed how we could create a more sustainable city, with the occurrences of heat waves, droughts, and wildfires, we need, it underscores the need to act to ensure our city's resilience throughout our lives. While we are already committed to embracing a sustainable living, the current infrastructure makes it challenging, we need more access to recycling bins around the city to reduce our impact on the environment, more sustainable transit options to lower our emissions, and more education on how we can live more sustainably. Community involvement is also crucial in this, from everyone, from local businesses to individual households, we need everyone to participate in making sustainable choices. Together as a community, we can make a city that not only thrives today, but also thrives for generations to come.
The next component, the next component of our facilitated discussion was centered around youth well-being. As you may know, Beaverton has the highest rate of youth homelessness across all of Oregon, this shows that being a young person can be tough in the city, and we need to focus on providing services for homeless youth in order to prioritize well-being. The need for this priority was also communicated by many, many of the attendees during our youth summit, as our most common responses were more accessible mental health care resources, increasing social spaces such as gyms and parks to build community, and increasing job and internship opportunities to help youth figure out what they want to do later in life. Finally, we discussed youth voice with the participants, we believe, we at the MEAP recognize that we are currently empowered to share our voices, but we believe that this should be the standard for all youth voices, hearing from our youth participants that many youth want to share their passions and their opinions, but don't know exactly how to. Based off this, we realized that we need to enable youth-based organizations to foster collective action and develop youth leadership skills among the youth in Beaverton. We recognize that creating change is complicated, and we heard from our participants that we need more opportunities as young people to learn how change really works. Finally, we, overall, we need young people to just have more platforms to have their voices be heard and for their opinions to have a place to thrive.
By putting together the input we've gathered from young people across the city, along with further discussion amongst our board, we've thought a lot about what the best first step would be towards creating the youth-oriented city that Beaverton teens desire to live in. The proposal we bring to you today starts with lowering the voting age for city elections to age 16.
The most important reason why Beaverton should consider lowering the voting age to 16 is because the youth voice matters. City decisions impact us currently and as well in the long run, as we pay taxes, drive on city roads, and are affected by on city roads, and are affected by housing and climate change crises. Secondly, we are ready to vote. After reading the ideas presented by the Youth of Beaverton during the youth summit event, it is evident to us that our peers and ourselves have so much valuable feedback and opinions and we deserve to be given a chance to use that knowledge to make change within our city. Finally, we know you may be concerned that sixteen-year-olds won't have the maturity or knowledge to vote, but it has actually been shown that cold cognition, which is the type of cognition that is best used for voting, fully develops by the age of sixteen and does not improve after. Additionally, young people perform as well, if not even better, on civic exams and civic tests compared to their adult counterparts.
And with this, it's also important to understand the practicality of voting at sixteen. Voting at sixteen has already been implemented in many countries such as Argentina, Germany, and Scotland, as well as in several U.S. cities such as Berkeley, California, New Jersey, and Tacoma Park, Maryland. These examples provide valuable case studies on how the youth, how young voters engage with the political process. Research has shown that eighteen- to thirty-four-year-olds are the least likely to vote in Beaverton. This age group often feels disconnected from local politics, leading to lesser, lesser participation in elections. But by, if we were to introduce the voting process at an earlier age, it can eliminate this trend and make these individuals more likely to continue voting as young adults. Furthermore, young voters also bring fresh perspectives and new ideas that can improve our city. Encouraging early civic engagement can lead to more engaged participation in voting, which will ultimately strengthen our city.
So is it possible to do this in Beaverton? This should be possible. The Oregon Constitution gives the right to vote to eighteen-year-olds, but it doesn't prohibit cities from granting the right to those younger than eighteen. Cities like our Beaverton have home rule, meaning that we can change the rules of our own elections. Through an ordinance, it should be possible for our city to, to alter the voting age for city elections, and we are proposing to alter this to sixteen.
Serving on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board has been an impactful opportunity for us to learn more about local government and provide the perspective of young people to city officials like yourselves. We have also been fortunate to have conversations with other youth to better understand the advantages and challenges of growing up here in Beaverton. We are here today because the city of Beaverton sees that young people deserve to have a seat at the table when it comes to shaping the future of our city, and we really hope that you take our proposal into consideration. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you. Great presentation, really well thought out. I really appreciate it. As someone that chose to join the military at seventeen, I think that making that decision but not being able to vote for the people that sent me to war a year later is something I've thought about quite often. Nathan and I have had quite a bit of conversation about this as you guys have been discussing it. I do think there's a couple questions that Nathan and I are going to research together with the county election officials, and we include you to come into that conversation if you want. We have to understand a few more things, but I think my office is happy with Nathan to kind of go through that on behalf of council and ask those questions. So I'd be happy to have any of you guys reach out to Nathan with similar concerns to make sure when we meet with the Secretary of State that we understand all ramifications of this decision. I would also encourage you to go to the school board with a similar request, because I do think when we talk about those that impact your life the most, your particular age group in the city, it is the school board, and so I would encourage you to have similar conversations with them, so.
And I'm just curious, like, when we think of seventeen- and sixteen-year-olds, what does it look like for folks who are not citizens? So just something to think about, right? Because you might not be a citizen, I think that's what you need to vote. So just putting it out there, I don't know how many of our high school and college students are like green card holders or residents in that way, so.
I think at this juncture, it would be about following the same state guidelines and then lowering the voting age. I think if we try to do too much, we're going to end up in the situation this council's always in. Instead of taking a meaningful step, we end up bogged down with a thousand different details. So my, my perspective is for us to look at the voting age and not add a bunch on to it, but I'm one of seven. What do you guys want? And that's not what they're asking us, so let's also be mindful of that.
I've had a really rough, like, work go, and today was a really hard day, and I just couldn't help but smile through your whole presentation, and so thank you for like bringing joy and also being one of the best presentations I think we've ever gotten. It was so wonderful, and I just loved getting to be your liaison this year and spend time with you, and so thank you. And I also just love that you came with an ask of us, and it's such a really meaningful ask and it kind of brings to life all that you've learned and worked on through this year, so I just want to thank you for bringing a little bit of joy and thoughtfulness, and my cheeks actually hurt right now, so thank you.
All right, friends. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next presentation, two, four, zero, five, nine. We'll see if you make Ashley smile for the next twenty minutes. Update on the Good Neighbor Agreement.
It's a tough act to follow. It was a great presentation.
Yeah, you want to reconvene?
It was impressive. Good evening, councilors. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Julaine Potter. I'm the interim program manager for homelessness here in the city of Beaverton, and tonight we're going to give you an update to the process of creating the Good Neighbor Agreement. Do the slides and turn my page. Drafting the Good Neighbor Agreement has been a collaborative process led by the city, Open Door Housing Works, the organization that will be operating the year-round shelter, and Washington County, who is funding the shelter and services. Co-presenting with me today is John McPherson, Shelter Services Program Manager with Open Door Housing Works, and we're also joined by Valentina Barrett, Community Engagement Program Coordinator for Washington County's Homeless Services. She's not presenting tonight, but is here as a knowledgeable resource. This is the timeline of the process, which is pretty busy because a lot of work has been done, but where the gold star is, is where we're at. We've just completed the third meeting and we have a Good Neighbor Agreement draft. At the beginning of the year, community outreach took place to the neighboring businesses as well as both of the neighborhood association committees, and all were invited to participate in the process. There have been three meetings to date, an information and listening session, a table topic-style workshop, and a final meeting to review the Good Neighbor Draft, Good Neighbor Agreement draft, which is currently posted for review and feedback on our website and the county's website. So the purpose and outcome of the three meetings were to, it was held March through May, and the purpose was to share information about shelter planning and implementation, gather feedback and questions from the community stakeholders, establish strong relationships between neighborhood partners, the new service provider and local government, and finally to develop a Good Neighbor Agreement, which is a guide for role expectations, communication strategies, and a clear description of action plan commitments. The Good Neighbor Agreement is a commitment to the community to ensure the shelter program offers a safe, respectful, and productive addition to the neighborhood. We all want the shelter to be a successful asset to our community. It is a living document that is developed in collaboration with community partners, applying program best practices, and will be reviewed and adjusted as needed. The meetings were really well-attended. We had ten surrounding businesses. Both of the neighborhood associations were represented. We had staff from the city, including the Beaverton Police Department, Tualatin Hills Parks and Recreation District, Washington County, Open Door, and then also Greater Good Northwest, which is the organization that provides street outreach and services at the library. And now John will go over the Good Neighbor Agreement in more detail, including the safety and program plans.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me, council, mayor. This is the first time I've actually presented in front of a council like this, so I appreciate you for having me here. A little nervous. So for our commitments to the city of Beaverton, Washington County, we are going to be maintaining a peaceful, safe, and clean neighborhood through which we'll be having our staff do perimeter checks within that five-hundred-foot boundary. We'll have a creation of a shelter outreach team that can be responsive to community needs and, and have our workforce development, encampment, cleanup crew come out and help with any cleaning that needs to be done in the area. So if, if things are looking really trash in certain areas, especially areas where we have high frequency of, of house population, we would have our team come out and help clean that up. We are here to help each other address concerns and solve problems, provide public service that benefits the whole community, and then respect, or provide, respect others and their properties, which is going to be reinforced with our residents through our shelter guidelines and our rules, which all residents have to sign, and that open, no problem, sorry. And that open door will hold them accountable for following using our accountability measures, and then partner to sustain livability and economic environment, in the economic environment of our neighborhood. So when there are any issues that arise, we're going to be promptly investigating all of these concerns, and these concerns can regard anything from participant behavior expressed, expressed by neighbors or community members, issues with any of our policies or procedures, and we'll have Beaverton-specific address for those concerns to be emailed to, and our staff will work to investigate, address, and respond to these concerns within five business days. This, so the, we do prohibit the participants from engaging in loitering, alcohol, or drug use, and panhandling within the five-hundred feet of that shelter. We're going to be working to establish a shelter outreach team. This outreach team will be responsible for engaging with neighbors, the Beaverton Police Department, street outreach, and homeless service providers operating in the region, and other neighboring businesses and residents. And then we'll be addressing all immediate threats to health and safety by contacting the Beaverton Police Department, Mental Health Crisis Response Team, and the Fire Department for all incidents that could arise. So we do have a code of conduct, and all of our residents have to sign that code of conduct during the intake process into our shelter system, and then we keep very clear records of all of, all of the things that they've signed and all of the written or verbal warnings that they've received over the course of our time with them, and those can lead to an exit from our program. And then lastly, we want to work with community partners, provide referrals to behavioral health supports, substance abuse treatment, and other wraparound supports.
So looking ahead, we're going to continue to gather feedback on the agreement and refine the draft as needed. We'll continue to post any updates of changes on the city and county websites, and for ongoing community engagement, all of the participants will be invited to tour the shelter when the construction is done and before it's open. And there will also be monthly neighborhood committee, committee meetings that will be facilitated by Open Door to continue the conversations and work through any issues that we might have. It's been a really productive and positive process, and we're looking forward to working with one another and the community as we open the shelter. Time.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, this is a presentation, so keep your comments in line with that. Counselor Tiffany?
Yeah, so just general comment, the wording and the language of it, the outreach, everything looks really solid and, and was really happy to see all of this. I have one fundamental question. At the very end of it, it says, "All participants understand this agreement is not a legally binding contract." And from what I understand of the research I've done on Good Neighbor Agreements, this, that's status quo. I'd love to understand why, just in light of they're virtually unenforceable. So why are they not legally binding?
Any attorneys here? That's a good question. That's actually language that was taken.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I should have referenced it in the, in the-
It's the very last sentence, and that was kind of added near the end. We had taken that off of another Good Neighbor Agreement that we have with the temporary shelter right now, and I think that that was also something that was pointed out because this agreement was reviewed by one of our attorneys and, but, you know, that's a good question, and I can't, I can't answer that. See her, come see ya.
Good evening, everyone. It's interesting, I think the, and I, Bill, I invite you to weigh in if you want to, but you don't need to. The, the issue about Good Neighbor Agreements is that they really are kind of agreements about best conduct, and so it is about how we all work together, and it is trying to stay out of the legal realm. It is about how we, as a community, live well together, and so the shelter residents are part of that community now, right? And so that's why it's kind of a negotiated agreement to say, this is how we're all going to live well together. That's why it's not legally binding. Now, we can step into the legal realm, but we don't want to in these kind of early stages of how we're all working together. That makes-
To me, not really.
Yeah.
I mean, I, there's a lot of language in here that is directly related to physical safety of everyone involved and illegal activities and potentially dangerous, just friction points around a very vulnerable population. The fact that we don't give ourselves a recourse to, to make that something that is binding, to me, kind of flies in the face of how seriously we're taking that.
I see where you're going with it. So it is clear that, that illegal activity takes us into a different realm, right? So part of what they talk about is reaching out to BPD, to Beaverton Police when it's necessary. When we reach that level, then we're kind of taking it out of the agreement phase and into the kind of behavioral criminal activity phase, and then BP does, BPD does get involved, so it goes beyond the contract.
Okay. And then last comment, it also extends to things like, like the garbage collection or other, other things that don't rise to that level, that to me are still serious issues for our community that need to be enforced. So I understand the sensitivities around this. It is something that has always not settled well with me through the entire process from the very beginning of when I took this, this seat, because we've been talking about this since that very beginning of that. So it's just getting clarity around that one issue and why it's like that. I, I really would be interested in understanding that.
Yeah, and we can do, we can follow up with a deeper dive on that if you'd like, absolutely, because it is, it is a kind of critical piece of how all of these puzzle pieces fit together. The, the littering piece as well, right? It is the question about what is in the realm of quality of life, and, you know, the shelter and our shelter operator is committed, as the shelter operator, to keeping the litter controlled and, but when we do get to littering that is considered illegal, then again, that's when BPD would get. But let's, we could do a deeper dive on this one. Please.
There are contracts in place with the operator and the county that would enforce the contractual agreement with the operator. However, because this is the scope for the neighborhood committee, then they don't fall under contractual obligation because it is a working framework, like Sia said, to develop good working relationships, but this scope and focus is more for the neighborhood committee and the collaboration between community, community, city of Beaverton, and the shelter operator. There are additional contracts in place that would be utilized to enforce any lapse in the obligations.
Yeah, a couple things. Appreciate this. Five-hundred feet?
Yeah, a couple of things. Appreciate this. 500 feet? Are we going to do any education on the folks on what that means, like where that is, right? Because I look at, I'm like, 500 feet, like, is that like the parking garage? Is that like the end of the building? I don't know. And I think we, we probably need to educate people. You don't have to answer this. This is just a couple bit of feedback for that. And then what I don't want to do is push out bad behavior just to the 500 feet mark. And so I really hope our operating model incorporates things like what staff's response will be if that behavior extends beyond the 500, what their responsibilities are, right? Like, you're not going to be the police of the neighborhood, but if you see bad behavior and it's past a certain point, like, what are your obligations? Because what we saw, you know, with, with some of the things at the current shelter, you know, like, if we weren't clear about what the obligations are of staff, then some bad things happen. And so that's been on my mind. And then the last one, conceptually, I know this is agreement between the shelter, the county, and the city, but I also think about, I live in the neighborhood around the current shelter, and I think a lot about, there's an opportunity for communicating to the people of Beaverton about what this agreement is and what they can expect, not just neighborhood, but just everyone, folks, right? Like, on, on a number of occasions, I've gone through and saw people near the current shelter clearly in crisis, clearly. And when I call non-emergency to get a check, I'm always the first person. And I know that there's multiple people that have walked by. And I think there's an opportunity for us to think conceptually about expanding this agreement, not just between the city government and, you know, you know, the nonprofit and the county, but like, can we communicate it as like a social contract between all of us, that we have an obligation to take care of each other? And this is how you can do that. If you see someone in crisis, this is the number you call, right? If you see this, this is what you call. Like, then it becomes like a, a good neighborhood agreement, right? And I think people would feel a little more comfortable about that. So just something, as you're drafting this, as we communicate, like, the, the result of that, I really hope we are considering that. I think that's really important to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'm really excited about this. I think this is really good. And I just want to share some further good news for any community members who are watching this, either here in person or online. The county recently did the groundbreaking for their addiction treatment center. So there's a lot of really great work happening in Beaverton and in Washington County, where we're using the very little amount of funds that we have to do some really incredible work that's really just setting the foundation for what services the city and county can provide for long into the future. So these are some first steps. It's part of a fuller picture that the county and the state are working on, too. And so I'm really excited about y'all's continuation of the work.
Y'all did great. Presentation. Really quick question. What is the policy around smoking for participants?
Yeah, so there will be a smoking area for participants, and they have to smoke in that specific area.
Might be worth throwing that in the code of conduct, maybe, just because that was the question that I had when I saw it. Just want to echo what Counsel Duggar said. I do notice that there's like a 24-hour line that's available, but to his point, like, making sure what numbers to call for what things, that all of them have that would be really great. Thank you.
I think it's the first time I spoke tonight, but, okay. So regards to definition of, definition of participants, this agreement regards to participants and the shelter. What about non-participants? And what's, what's the definition of participant versus a visitor, let's say? Because one thing I imagine is that there's going to be people around there who doesn't want to go into shelter, but want to resource, want to choose a shower, use the facilities around it, right? And what are your requirements? And what are you going to do about those people, those non-participant, who's near there, let's say, panhandling, trashing, whatever? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I would say that first and foremost, that's part of the reason why we are creating an outreach team within the shelter system itself, so that our shelter outreach team can actually go out more immediately and address some of those concerns and provide them with resources and potential shelter referrals to get them into the shelter system. I would also say that if they're within that 500-foot boundary, that's part of why we created the 500-foot boundary in the first place for the specific area. It's such a condensed area that it's, it's a larger area, would be hard to, to navigate for, for a smaller staff. But it also fits in with the time, place, and manner rulings. So we would be able to potentially, if we had to move them along out of the area, although we would prefer for them to work with us and, and get services. I don't, if that helps.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
If I add a little bit to that, too. Part of this, too, is that the shelter is part of a larger system of care. And so there, there's an outreach team, Greater Good Northwest, that you know, that we work with as well, who's already on the ground with a lot of this, able to do the kind of outreach that might go beyond the perimeter that Open Door is necessarily there for. But the, and, you know, BPD is also there to do that kind of on-the-ground outreach. So this is the partnership among all of our community, our community partners to make sure that folks don't fall between the cracks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I now call to order the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instruction included on tonight's agenda. Each person who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to two minutes. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person speaks, council members may ask questions of the speaker. When all public remarks have concluded, I will close the public hearing, and then council will, can begin deliber, deliberation on proposal resolution number 4877. Is there a staff presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, or Council President and councilors. I do not have a presentation for you. It's a very small item. So last meeting, you approved our budget for next year. This meeting, this is a wrap-up of the current year budget. So this is a technical cleanup, essentially, to make sure we don't have budget violations for some items that we were aware of and some that we found through our year-end analysis. So that is what the nature of this supplemental is.
I did hear this nasty rumor that Edward has been calling himself the Vice Mayor in my absence, so I'm just sure that you're responding to it. It's okay. I see you. Does anyone have any questions of the Assistant Finance Director?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. And this is more a general question, because I know there was a lot of, like, overtime and some, some of that in general. What is our policy around overtime? And maybe, sorry, I don't know if this is the right place for the question, but maybe in the future, I'd like to understand what our policy is around overtime. Leave it at that.
Well, so we leave that up to the operational needs of the departments. There has, so in this particular instance, we've been incrementally increasing the overtime in the budget over a period of time. Happened to be that there's just the fortunate experience of having mostly fully staffed in that department, whereas in the past, vacancy savings has covered that, that hole. And so as we continue to make sure that we're properly budgeting for those things, that was one area that was on our radar. We just didn't catch it soon enough to get it earlier.
We have a hand raised, but I believe it's been raised since the beginning of the meeting, so I can unmute them if you'd like me to, or.
You should see if they want to talk on this topic, or if they've just forgotten they had their hand raised. I don't think Alice is there.
I move, I move that the council approve resolution 4877, a resolution adopting the supplemental budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on tonight's motion? All right. Will the recorder call the roll?
Vice Mayor, Mayor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
The actual mayor, both yes. Okay, tonight's passes. We voted, the mayor, the vice mayor. What else do we need?
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. We, we voted. All right. All right. We will now move on to our next public hearing. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on proposed increase in the monthly sanitation sewer and storm rates for operating the city's utility system. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. Each person who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to two minutes. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comment, council members may ask questions of the speaker. When all public comments have concluded, I will close the public hearing, and the council can begin deliberation on proposed resolution number 4878. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, there is. Susan Cole, Assistant Finance Director. I haven't done this in person since before the pandemic, so if I'm a little rusty, forgive me. So tonight, we're here to consider the sanitary sewer and stormwater rate increase effective July 1, 2024. And as reflected in the agenda bill, you'll note that the sewer rates are going up roughly four point, excuse me, 4.7%. The monthly impact is $2.56 for each rate payer, average residential rate payer, for an impact of $30.72 per year. And our stormwater rates are going up roughly 4%. 52 cents per month is the impact. The annual impact would be $6.24 on a residential customer. And we do follow Clean Water Services' schedule for increasing rates. So they are proposing to increase their rates also on July 1, and we follow along their same percent increases and their same schedule. They had a public hearing earlier today. And so that's why the timing, and that's why the percent increase. Clean Water Services is responsible for 84% of the sewer utility and 25% of the stormwater utility. And so we're just following along on their schedule and their rate impacts. The impact to our utilities are seen in this slide. The rate increase will generate approximately $240,000 in increased revenue to our sanitary sewer utility. And for stormwater, it will generate approximately $220,000 in additional revenue. These revenues are built into the fiscal '25 budget. They help pay for the programs associated with those utilities, the increasing costs for staff, the materials, and capital improvements, in addition to implementing our various master plans. And so that is the presentation for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Just got one question. So you said, our rates typically follow along with Clean Water Services' rates. And I do see that in most cases, although on page, or table one, I guess page three of the agenda bill, the city of Beaverton monthly charge for the sewer fixed rate shows a 7.6% increase, and Clean Water Service monthly charge looks like 4%. Is there, so when I hear follow along, I think, like, match pretty closely, can you, can you talk about that?
Sure. Yes, I apologize. So Clean Water's monthly fixed rate is going up by 4%. Beaverton does have to add a little bit more to its fixed rate per month to add that predictability for the sewer utility for our capital replacement and repair. We are going to undergo a rate study in this coming fiscal year to review these rates, and we are currently working with Clean Water Services on helping to pay for the services of a fiscal agent that we provide to them. And so that will be part of the study that we'll undergo in this next fiscal year. But that additional margin that we add to our fixed rate is, is for that capital repair and replacement.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. It looks like just the percentage increases are mostly just tied along with, pretty close with inflation.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And I don't want to eclipse over her, Susan's comment there, that the council asks staff to look at recuperating costs. One of the things we do is we own the billing for that service that the county dictates, and so they've not been paying their fair share of the administration of that. And if you remember during the pandemic, when we collected partial water rates, we had to pay the sewer first, meaning the county, not us. And so we took on a large financial impact by doing that kind of stuff. So this is just staff responding to us, making sure that they're going after a cost recovery. And I know that was a bleep of your conversation, but it's important for the council to know you guys are doing what we ask you to do.
Any other questions, staff? Okay. City Recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak?
No, there is not.
All right. I will now close the public hearing on the city's proposed increase in the monthly sanitary sewer and stormwater rates for operating the city's utility system. The city council may either adopt the proposed resolution or take other action. If other action is proposed, the motion must include specific action as to what other action is. Is there a motion?
I move that the council approve resolution 4878, a resolution to consider proposed increases in the monthly sanitary sewer and stormwater rates for operating the city's utility systems.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I think it goes to Counsel Tivnan. Any discussion on the motion? Scene nine, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. All right. We will now move to our third public hearing. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on traffic commission issue TC 853, School Zone on Southwest 12th Street at the Pilgrim Lutheran Christian School. This public hearing arises out of the traffic commission's decision to deny the crest, request to establish a 20 mile an hour zone on Southwest 12th Street at the Pilgrim Lutheran Christian School. At the April 4, 2024 city council meeting, the city council pulled this issue from the consent agenda and voted to hold a public hearing at a future date. I now declare the public hearing open. I'll ask the city attorney to go over any preliminary legal matters before we proceed further.
Thank you, Mayor. This hearing will be conducted as outlined in Beaverton Code Section 6.02065. When the city council decides to conduct its own hearing on a traffic commission issue, Beaverton Code Section 6.02065B5 states that the hearing by the city council must be held in accordance with subsection E through H of Section 6.02065. 6.02065G concerns the scope of the council's review of traffic commission matters. Absent any action on the city council, the hearing is to be held on the record. But if council chooses, it may hold this hearing de novo. Legal staff recommends that the council hear this matter de novo. That would allow the council to consider new evidence that may be offered during the hearing. Otherwise, the council is strictly limited to reconsidering only the evidence presented at the traffic commission hearing. Before the council can make the decision to hear this matter de novo, the city's traffic commission procedure, as adopted in Section 6.065 of the Beaverton Code, require the council members to make a motion to hear this matter de novo, for that motion to be seconded, and the majority of the council to support the motion. So Mayor, before we proceed further with these preliminary matters, can you please determine if the council formally agrees to hear this matter de novo?
What would you guys like to do?
I move that the council hold this traffic commission hearing as a de novo hearing.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's agenda, or I mean, motion?
Just a quick question. Do we have to go this route? Is there any alternate route to, to discuss or address this matter?
Well, at this point, I would say, no, there's really not, in terms of where you're at right now. You need to make a decision. There are some options toward the end about what your decisions can be. You're not required to say yes, no, and those are only binary choices we have. But I think you do need to proceed with the hearing.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I mean, my preference would be that we don't hold a de novo hearing.
Any other discussion? I mean, my preference would be that we don't hold a de novo hearing, so I'll be voting no on that. I think we've empowered our traffic commission to hear a lot of testimony. They go out and scope the sites. They do an awful lot of work behind the decision. So I think undoing their work or having more information seems not like something I'm interested in. So I'll be voting no tonight.
I just want to make sure that that means we'll be hearing for relevancy, and I may be advising you to object to evidence coming in that's not already in the record. It just becomes procedurally complex.
Yeah, I understand.
All right.
But is this taken all vote? Like, it's, it's majority?
A majority, right, exactly. It's a majority vote.
All right, the recorder can call the roll.
Counselor Duggar.
Hope I wouldn't go first. Yes.
Counselor Hart Meyer Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
No.
Six one.
All right. So if I can continue, Mayor? Yes, thank you. I want to talk about the procedure and some legal matters, and then we can move on to the actual hearing. The hearing will proceed as follows. After these preliminary legal matters, city staff will make a presentation. Next, members of the public will have the opportunity to speak up to five minutes each. Each person shall be, must give their name, address, and the city of residence before giving testimony. City councillors may, after recognition by the presiding officer, ask clarifying or follow-up questions of individuals providing testimony after the person has given that testimony. Questions should relate to the testimony being provided. Council members may, after the presentation of testimony of all interested persons, ask clarifying or follow-up questions of staff. Questions posed to staff should be, again, related to the testimony provided. During the public hearing, the presiding officer, in this case the mayor, may exclude or eliminate cumulative, repetitious, or immaterial matters. In other words, they can rule on relevancy and redundancy. They can arrange the speakers in any manner they wish. I don't think there are many to be arranged. Limit the testimony to less than five minutes of each person who has stated their interest in testifying, but with the majority of the consensus of the council, you can further limit the time beyond the five minutes to something less, provided that the presiding officer, the mayor, announces and the vote is taken to reduce the time before the hearing begins with testimony. At the end of the public hearing, each council member may comment and discuss the testimony given during the public hearing. In other words, you can deliberate at that point. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included in tonight's agenda. Now, I'll cover some preliminary legal matters in terms of burden of proof, criteria, and appeal rights, and then I'll be done. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applicant's application are consistent with the Beaverton Code and that any other applicable provisions, the applicable criteria for this hearing are Beaverton Code Section 6.0206A1G and BC 6.0206O A1H, which together essentially require that applicable traffic decisions must be based on the, an endeavor to carry out anticipated traffic volume safely and to comply with federal and state regulations. Any testimony that speakers present must be directed to these criteria or at some other criteria, Metro, TRIMET, State of Oregon, or federal law, or policy that the person believes does apply to this decision. Only those who submit comments or give oral testimony will have standing to appeal this decision. Mayor, that concludes the legal matters. You can proceed with the hearing.
Okay, staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty, members of the city council. I'm Jabra Kasha. I'm the city transportation engineer. And tonight I have with me Ms. Kara Hall. She is the Assistant City Transportation Engineer. The school zone on Southwest 12th Street between Lombard and Hall Boulevard was reviewed by the Traffic Commission on February 1st. Following the staff presentation and public testimony, the Traffic Commission denied the request to establish a school zone, 20 miles per hour school zone on 12th Street by the school. The reason the Traffic Commission denied the request is due to the low traffic volume and low 85th percentile speed on 12th Street. The 85th percentile speed means 85% of the drivers drive at or below this speed, which it was recorded at 26 miles per hour. The posted speed limit on 12th Street is 25 miles per hour. This traffic count and speed survey was done in July of 2023, and we heard there was some objection that this speed study was done when the school was off. So after the Traffic Commission hearing, we did two speed studies, one in February and one in April of this year. And both studies basically showed the same speed, it's 26 miles per hour. The speed studies were done for over a week each time, and this was the highest recorded one. There are some days it showed like 24 to 23 miles per hour. The traffic volume in July was recorded at 570 vehicles per day, and in April it showed 711 vehicles per day. So there is an increase of 140 vehicles approximately, and that's due to school traffic. In February, the traffic volume was recorded at 677 vehicles per day. There were, in a five-year period between January 2018 and December 2022, there was one recorded crash along that stretch of 12th Street. And it happened at night, where a car crashed with a parked car. Currently, there is no marked school crosswalk. And the school safety guide that's published by Oregon Department of Transportation, Transportation Safety Division, does not recommend establishing a 20 miles per hour school zone when children are driven to school or there isn't a marked crosswalk. For those reasons, the Traffic Commission denied this request. And here we are at this hearing, and if you have any questions for staff, we're here to answer any questions.
Counselor Tivnan.
On that note, that, because that was the thing that really stuck out to me was, well, that's what ODOT's recommending. But the question, I think, is the one I can't get away from is every, every child that attends this school is driven there. So I'm assuming that means there are no children in the neighborhood that attend that school. And it's a private school, so I understand that. But I, I assume there's a possibility that at some point in the future, there might be a child or more from the neighborhood that attend the school and would then, you know, reasonably want to be able to walk to school. So can you, can you give clarity on that? Is it, was that, was that explored at all about future conditions, not just the conditions as they are today, but that it is a school and?
We cannot predict the future, you know? Who's going to attend? Are they going to be in that neighborhood or not?
Okay. Well, then that gets me to the other consideration that the commission took into account, which I'm not going to read it verbatim, but it was along the lines of putting one here and it being effective might make people not respect these in other locations in the future, which to me seems like, you know, trying to read the future.
This is based on experience. And when we have traffic control devices that ineffective, and when you don't have anybody crossing the street, drivers will ignore that 20 miles per hour if it was there. And that's been the experience in general for traffic control devices. For that reason, that determination was in that safety guide.
Thank you. In the discussion from the Traffic Commission, they talked about alternative signage and things like that. And I'm curious if, like, what has happened since the time of the meeting, knowing that, you know, the request for the school zone was denied? Has there been any additional signage or anything to indicate, right, to help people visually see? You know, there's even some confusion that the sign in place is a school sign, right? You could see even like Traffic Commission, or somebody in the Traffic Commission meeting, right, didn't know that that was a school sign. So I'm just curious, like, what has happened since?
Yes, at the hearing, actually, the youth pastor at the school testified during the hearing. And during testimony, she didn't even care about the 20 miles per hour. She asked basically to add school signing. But there are existing school signings that she said, it just, if you read the minutes, you know, it says a lady with a child on it. But this sign that's on the street actually is the standard sign that's used nationwide. And then she asked that if we could add the school plaque below it. So at the, when the Traffic Commission made the decision, at the end, they denied it, but also they made the motion that staff will upgrade the signs and explore if we could add the school below the school sign. A month later, staff did upgrade the signs. We installed larger signs. We added the school plaque below those school signs. We added even a sign on Hall Boulevard for people coming, turning into 12th, you know, that there is a school there. We added the warning, a school warning sign with a right arrow on it. Those were installed, yes. And the Traffic Commission were notified of the change, too.
Okay. And how soon after that meeting were the signs put in?
I'll say within a month.
Okay. So there was a few months left of the school year with the signs in place?
Yes.
Did we hear from the school at all after the new signs went in place? On, like, had they noticed an impact?
No.
We didn't, we did not hear from them?
We did not hear.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I live in the neighborhood. I'm like three blocks from it. I walk it. I, it, I also live really close to St. Cecilia's, for instance, and very few of those children are actually dropped off. I don't, or, or walk, right? They're not from the neighborhood either. So I think about things not just from a dropping off, but I do see a lot of kids, like at St. Cecilia's, walk over to the library, right? So it's not just a dropping off thing for me. Like, it's, there are things where, where teachers will walk, kids to a nearby park. Elsie's store is right there. I see kids playing in front of it all the time. That's not, that's the opposite direction of 12th. So my inclination is to just defer to the Traffic Commission. I think this, to start with the signs, I think we need to collect more data to see if that satisfies what the requesters would like. I get nervous, though, around, you know, a conversation around like this, you know, what if the inevitable happens? Or what if, what if something terrible happens and we could have slowed it down or we could have stopped it? I don't know. You know, I don't, I don't know that I have the tools to make the decision. That's why I also defer to the Traffic Commission on this, because you guys did, I read the notes, you did consider a few things. I just, I don't know that we considered more than just dropping off. And there, there are times outside of the day that, as a neighborhood resident, I see kids with teachers and whatnot at schools that are not being dropped off, right? They're walking through the neighborhood. They're going to a park. They're doing recess time, stuff like that. And so did we, did we consider any of that? Did?
When you talk about school speed zones, the focus will be on the school. Where kids cross, that's the main thing. They establish those speed zones is for crossing more than anything else. You're walking on the sidewalk, you walk on the sidewalk. At 20 miles per hour or 25, it doesn't make much difference. You cross at the intersection, every intersection is a crosswalk, regardless it is marked or unmarked. For those reasons, the focus is just on the school and the crosswalk itself. You mentioned St. Cecilia's. Yes, they do have a crosswalk. They go to the library. Even parents, sometimes they use the library parking lot as a drop off and pickup. Also, to have a marked crosswalk, it requires to have a crossing guard, too.
I don't think I have any other questions right now. I'll let you know if that pops up, but that's, yeah, I'm thinking.
Yeah, thank you, Jabra. Yeah, I requested to pull this from the consent agenda a month or two ago, because I had several of concerns. One of those was when the traffic study was initially done back in July 2023 and school not being in session. So I am happy to see that there were two more traffic studies done in February and April of this year, and that the data was pretty consistent. I think that there's just, there's one area where I'm, where I'm getting hung, hung up on it, and it's similar to what Counselor Tivnan shared about kids walking to school. And we've got public testimony on page 19 of the, of the PDF of the Traffic Commission meeting, where the youth pastor of the school estimated that there were five families with kids who walked to school. And I know that's not an official analysis, but it is an estimate of somebody who works for the school. So I, I'm, I'm just getting hung up on that part a little bit. And then there's a, a section that we mentioned here, the Guide to School Safety from, I'm just reading this from the Traffic Commission report. The Guide to School Safety, published by the Oregon Department of Transportation, Roadway Section, and Transportation Safety Division, discourages the establishment of a 20 mile per hour school zone where children are bused or driven to school, or, in the absence of a marked school crosswalk. So I think I'm a little, I'm a little bit confused here. If either one of you can give some clarity. If I see in the public testimony that kids are walking to school, but then this or is in here with the active crosswalk, and I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit with how I need to actually interpret this roadway school safety guide. If either of you can give some context there. And if that was confusing, I can try to rephrase it.
The, the school safety guide, it's, it's used by the state and other agencies statewide. So it's a guide that we use. Yes, it says when children are driven to school, dropped off, picked up. Also, the, the crosswalk is, is another factor. Yes, at the public hearing and in the minutes, the school rep mentioned probably five family members. Staff did review the site several times. I did it myself once. Other staff members did it twice. And during that review, we didn't see anybody crossing or walking to school. That's why in the report, it was included that nobody walked to school.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate your patience with me as I ask all these questions. If, if it was true that kids did walk to school, would that change the process or decision that we would be making at all?
It depends on the number of people who, children are crossing, too. If there was many of them, potentially, yes. If they're walking by them, by themselves, potentially, yes. Is there benefit between 20 and 25? There is recent studies show that when you drop the speed to 20, you gain probably maybe one mile from that dropping this speed limit. So effectiveness, I, I don't think you'll gain much. For those reasons, that, that's why the recommendation was denied.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Do you by chance have images of the before and after signs, just, just so I can understand what we did do for them?
I don't have images, but I suggest using maybe Street View from Google.
That was my only question.
In terms of looking that up on Google right now, that's going to create problems for the record. If you do find it, be sure to share it with everybody so they all can see it, or just choose not to do it, but. choose not to do it, but.
I, I can give you dimensions, what's the difference?
Okay.
It used to be 30 inches by 30 inches.
Okay.
And we bumped it up to 36 inches by 36 inches.
And is it the school sign?
It's the school sign, and it's fluorescent lime green.
Yep, okay, okay. Trying to get a visual, visual person, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty, and councillors. Uh, my name's Ernie Conway, uh, I'm Beaverton resident, um, and I'm also member of the Traffic Commission. I do not represent the Traffic Commission this evening, and I'm not speaking for anyone on the Commission except myself. Um, what I wanted to do was, um, I felt it was kind of important to come out and, uh, do a follow-up, um, based on what was said during the, um, initial request to pull the consent agenda item. And during that time, there were a couple of things noted about how, uh, nobody had walked to school, school zones on the street would be ineffective, uh, other comments that went there, and then, uh, it was noted about the crash. Before I begin anymore, I'd like to make sure that we're, we're just very clear that , um, the Traffic Commission does not get a reimbursement, we don't get any kind of money, we don't get a stipend, we don't get anything. These are 100% volunteers in the community. We have worked really hard, I feel, in my tenure, with 25-some years of volunteer work, that, um, the mayor has worked hard to get a diverse group. We have people who ride bikes, we have people who walk, we have people who commute various ways. We spend a tremendous amount of time, and as a chair, I can tell you, there are people who feel we probably spend too much time talking about things that are not part of a public hearing. But we are forced to do that because as a Traffic Commission, we don't have quantified rules of the Planning Commission where you say, "Did you meet the noise level? Did you meet this? Did you meet this?" And they wave it on and they go, knowing full well that in some situations, that certain circumstances are not going to work. They come back to the Traffic Commission that does not have that. So we have to take into account safety, 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 and we have continuous safety decisions, conversations, and everything that comes up is about safety. So, to the first point, um, I think one of the comments was that, uh, council needs to take a look at this and pull it from the consent agenda because one of our goals is safety and community goals, uh, and safety of the community. That is our number one priority, and we spend so much time, hours, in these hearings, talking about things that probably aren't relevant, if you really look at it. But, that being said, we end up educating people, right? The, the request was not to put in a speed zone. It's not a put in, or, sorry, not to put in a school zone. It was to put in a school speed zone, right? There already is a school zone there. There already is school. We had the conversation about people not knowing. The person who appeared and testified, and there was only one, only one person came that represented the school. No parents, no community members, there were four letters, you'll note that, and as a side note, they were addressed to, um, a couple of them were addressed to City Council. They did not know that it was a Traffic Commission hearing, that happens quite frequently. Public testimony will be submitted and saying, "Dear City Councillor, please make sure this happens," right? They're not, they're not sure what they're discussing. So the question was about a school speed zone, and we had to go through and ask. When the lady was approached and we said what would happen, as Mr. Koshia noted, she did not say, "I, I really don't need the speed if we had more signs." And Mr. Koshia, to his credit, said, "This is what we can do." And ca- and the Commission went through and addressed each of the items, I think, that was brought up, which is interesting, um, that those questions were, um, discussed. We talked about the active speed, uh, we discussed the history, we also asked why, um, there wasn't a school speed zone when the school was set up. It's a, well, it's 40 years ago, everybody drives to school anyway, the 85th percentile, there were a whole bunch of reasons. Those questions are explored every single time because we have people on the Commission who feel that the entire city should be 20 miles an hour everywhere, and there are other people that feel like we're lowering the speed limit too much. These questions we have, happen all the time. Uh, in some other things, then, um, the feedback from the community, uh, we asked what the school wanted, we talked to what they thought they did. They wanted school sign, they wanted a, a sign that specifically said "school." They wanted larger signs, we meant that, we talked about active crosswalk, crosswalk didn't qualify because of the number of people that didn't go. Those questions were all brought up because safety i- is everything we do at, at this Commission, and we are put in such a weird, odd spot because how do you tell somebody that they can park here, but they don't park there, and people walking through one way because they're trying to solve a problem with something different? They'll park a car on a corner, and then somebody will put no parking on the corner. It had nothing to do with the car in the corner, the person parked it there because they felt that people were driving too fast. But you have to get to the root of it. And the root of this was, they wanted more signs to say that this was a school zone, and yet what they were asking for was a school speed zone that didn't qualify. Mr. Koshia addressed every single one of our concerns, every single one of those questions, and the one person who didn't agree with it felt that, I can't speak on that, but there was only one person that did not agree after we had gone through everything, and that, to my opinion, was a reluctant vote. So, sorry to go over, but it just, I, I feel that we have addressed every single question that came up. Also, we follow up with what was going on. Where are the signs? When are they going to be done? We have two commissioners that consistently ask at the beginning of each next meeting, what happened with that? And Mr. Koshia begins with staff reports at every one of our Traffic Commission. But everyone, to their credit, every single commissioner goes out on site and spends time watching this. We park on the side and wa- spent the entire morning watching people drive their kids to school and then drive back.
Thank you, Ernie. Uh, we're at the part where if there's any questions, the council might ask you, since you're, you're in the hot seat. Any questions from the council to Mr. Conway? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you. Appreciate your time and everything. Okay. Uh, does the staff or city attorney have any further comments or clarification regarding this issue?
None from the city attorney.
Okay. Uh, does the council members have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing. Um, this document is so large, I'm having a hard time following it around here. Um, gonna close the public hearing, um, the council may make prelimi-
I think we just, we can move to a motion, right?
Yeah, we could, yeah, we're looking for a motion, so...
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I would move to deny the appeal and affirm the Traffic Commission's decision on the issues embodying, embodied in TC Issue Number 853, and direct staff to prepare a final decision in order based on the findings and the staff reports and the entire record.
Second?
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's? Go ahead.
Yep, I will be voting also to deny the appeal, even though I am the one who requested it, which feels really strange. Um, but I appreciate the testimony received tonight, um, and the clarifications from the engineer that we received as well. Um, I think the city followed the right process, and I'm, I am glad that we got a closer look at it as a council. Um, I was able to get some more of my, my questions answered, so, um, that's why I'll be voting this way.
Thank you. Councillor Hassan, is that you?
I just wanted to thank, um, the person from the Traffic Commission that we know how hard this work is. So thank you for preparing that, and I will also be supporting this motion. Thanks.
Okay. Will the reporter call the roll?
Um, Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Hart-Mayer Prigg?
Yes.
Councillor Dugger?
Yes.
7-0.
Thank you.
Who seconded the motion?
Who made the motion?
No, who seconded the motion?
John.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that happened, so.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you, Ernie, for spending yet another evening on this topic and visiting us tonight, so. Uh, our next item is the first reading of three ordinance. On July 2nd, 2024, during the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding ordinance annexing one parcel of land at 3215 Southwest 170th Avenue, withdrawing the parcel from the Tuolatin Water District, Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, Washington County Urban Road Maintenance, and adding the parcel to Five Oaks Triple Creek Neighborhood Association Committee LU 32024-00243-3215 Southwest 170th Avenue Annexation ANX 2024-00240. On July 2nd, 2024, during the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding the ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, land use map and zoning map on parcel at 3215 Southwest 170th Avenue, LU 32024-00243-3215 Southwest 170th Avenue Annexation, CPMA 32024-00241/ZZMX 12024-00242. And also on July 2nd, during a regularly scheduled City Council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding the ordinance amending Beaverton Section Chapter 51805 relating to the prohibited camping and gas heaters. Okay, we do have one more work session, I, we need a five-minute break, I need a five-minute Okay, Cooper Mountain Community Plan. Do you know how many times you've come to us on this topic?
I, I do think it's double digits.
Forty-seven? That's what I think. Okay, go ahead.
Is it on? Oh, you're right, it was on. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty and City Councillors. I'm Rob Zeller, a senior planner with the city's planning division. I'm joined this evening in person by Brian Martin, long-range planning manager, and virtually by Brittany Gata and Lauren Russell, associate planners who may participate in the discussion after the staff presentation. I'm here tonight to provide an overview of the draft development code updates for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, which are summarized in Attachment A in your packet. At the end of the staff presentation, we will ask you if you support the direction of the zoning map and development code amendments, and if you have suggestions or questions about either document. This map shows the 1,200-acre project area. This area is anticipated to provide about 5,000 homes, which includes a mix of different housing types. There are eight project goals described in the city council-supported community plan. These goals provide regulatory guidance for the draft development rules. On this slide is the draft zoning map, which identifies four proposed zoning districts where different development rules apply. The draft zoning map is based on the concept map included in the community plan. Together, the zoning map, along with the goals and policies in the community plan, collectively express the vision and desired outcomes for this area. Commercial uses, parks, and higher-density residential uses are grouped in some locations to create activity centers linked by a multimodal transportation network. For example, in the southwest corner of Cooper Mountain, there is one activity center near the intersection of Grabhorn and Tile Flat that would be easily accessible to people living in South Cooper Mountain as well as Cooper Mountain. Along the northeast corner of the plan area, there is another activity center along 175th, just north of Winkleman Park. These activity centers are easily accessible by walking, biking, and driving. By consolidating these activities in compact walkable areas, this reduces the need for car travel and encourage visitors to walk, bike, or roll after they've arrived. Outside of these areas is what we call the residential mix zone, marked by yellow on the map. This area is intended for smaller-scale housing, that includes a mix of single-detached dwellings, middle housing, fiveplexes, and sixplexes. Even within these areas intended for lower-density housing, there are often opportunities for small-scale commercial uses so that residents can walk to a corner store to buy groceries or a cup of coffee, among other things. All types of residential areas on this map are connected by a transportation network that links neighborhoods with important destinations. Furthermore, activity centers, apartments, and parks are evenly distributed along key transportation corridors to ensure they are transit-ready in the future. Throughout Cooper Mountain, there is also a resource overlay marked by this green-hatched area on the map. The resource overlay indicates that some development may be allowed, but will be more limited than in areas outside the overlay. For the remainder of the presentation, I will focus on how the draft development rules implement the goals in the community plan. In the interest of time, I will highlight draft development rules that address unique circumstances or contain notable differences from other citywide rules. We structured the presentation to focus on standards in the draft code, however, the draft code also includes discretionary processes if a property owner desires more flexibility and proposes an alternative approach that still meets the intent of the desired outcomes. I'll start with the first goal of equity. The development rules promote racial equity by aiming for about 5,000 homes to help address the region's housing shortage, incentivizing affordable housing, and ensuring homes have access to nature and parks. The second goal is housing. In the CMRM zoning district, the draft code requires housing variety and integration for developments three acres and larger to provide 30% of housing units and housing types other than single-detached homes, and integrate that housing somewhat to help create more inclusive neighborhoods. The third goal aggress, uh, addresses natural resources and trees. The draft code includes a resource overlay, which indicates where additional environmental rules apply to achieve project goals related to natural resources. The resource overlay protects the area's most significant natural resources. On this slide, we are looking at an example of a lot that is being divided for development to build housing. The gray area inside the lot represents land inside the overlay. During a land division, 80% of the land will be required to be protected from disturbance and put into, um, separated into a tract. The remaining 20% can then be developed to build roads and housing. In this 20% is also, um, where the property owner would have to mitigate for disturbances, mitigation can happen anywhere on the site. The tree code for Cooper Mountain proposes rules that aim to preserve existing trees, expand the tree canopy to reach a 40% tree canopy target in the plan area outside the nature park, and provide some development flexibility on sites with a lot of trees. These rules are in two categories, tree preservation standards and tree canopy standards, which only apply at the time of initial development. When the code mentions tree preservation, it refers to retaining existing trees and tree canopy on the site. The minimum tree preservation percentages are 65% of existing tree canopy within the resource overlay and 40% of existing tree canopy outside the resource overlay. Whereas tree preservation refers to retaining existing trees on the site, minimum tree canopy standards focus on ensuring the site has sufficient tree canopy either now or in the future. The draft tree code requires 65% tree canopy inside the resource overlay. After the initial development of a site, tree removal rules will apply in the future if a property owner would like to make changes to their property. Tree removal rules are different in Cooper Mountain. They allow some tree removal while adding replanting or fee in lieu of replanting, so the area going forward can change a bit while still meeting the 40% canopy goal. Some trees, such as trees on, small trees and trees on very small lots, could be removed without a permit. In some cases, a tree removal permit is required. For example, a simple tree removal permit would be required for the removal of dead trees, hazardous trees, and a limited number of trees, six inches DBH or larger, DBH meaning diameter of breast height. However, if a property owner wished to remove more than the limited number of trees, then an application with a higher level of review would be required. In this situation, tree planting or paying a fee in lieu of planting are both options. The sixth goal addresses transportation. The transportation map illustrates a connected network of pedestrian routes, trails, bike paths, and streets that provide safe, convenient access to important destinations in and around Cooper Mountain. The seventh goal addresses commercial uses. The zoning map includes 53 acres of mixed-use zoning where commercial is allowed. In the CMCS zone, which is red on the map, commercial uses are required. Each site must provide a minimum of 6,000 square feet of commercial space per acre. Once 30,000 square feet of commercial space is present near a site, the code does not require, but still allows, additional commercial space. In the CMHDR zone, which is purple on the map, both residential and commercial uses are allowed, but there is no minimum amount of commercial floor area required. In some areas within the CMRM zone, again, this is yellow on this zoning map, the draft code also allows small-scale commercial uses to promote small businesses and entrepreneurship opportunities in neighborhoods. Specifically, small-scale commercial uses are allowed near neighborhood parks, neighborhood routes, and property zone CMMR, which is orange on the map. That concludes the presentation. With the remaining time, we'd like to hear from the mayor and city council members on whether you support the direction of the zoning map and development code amendments, and do you have suggestions or questions on either? Thank you.
Thank you for tonight's presentation. And I feel like this is such a labor of love from your team, and I know how much work you guys have been putting into this. And it's so hard to come to us and then have us nitpick it and then tell you to go back and do it again. So I'm, I'm gonna not try to do that today. It's not perfect. It's not exactly what Lacey Beatty wants out of this. I recognize that. But I think that you guys have done remarkably well, given seven of people's opinion on what we want this to look like and be. I have this, trying to zone out from this space because I live in the neighborhood. I live near that roundabout. I just really worry about the lack of food places. And I know that you're saying there's these potential opportunities for it, but it's not just about this 53 acres we're doing. It's about the entire neighborhood around it. And the, really, the access to a grocery store is so far away from this neighborhood. And I mean, I have young kids. I go to Safeway three times a week. Every time, I say, "I'm only going to the grocery store one time this week. So if you don't put it on the list, you're not gonna get it." And the next day, I'm at the damn grocery store. And it's close enough where I could ride my bike over. And if we're really wanting to have neighborhoods, we're, we're not car-dependent, we need to have a serious look about food and what we're doing here. But that has been my main concern the whole time. I understand with the natural resource area, this is gonna be really challenging for us to put in more commercial space. So given my concern, and, and I don't really see a clear fix for it on this map, we're gonna have to look at other parts of the city to address this. I'm okay with the direction we're going tonight. Who was first? Counselor Teeter.
Okay, thank you both. Can we pull up the, the map on page five? The community plan map? Yep, that one. Thank you. Okay, I've got two comments. Actually, I shared these in, in my staff briefing as well, but I, I wanna share them with the city council as well. Get your thoughts. The first is related to small-scale commercial that's allowed in the CMRM zone, that yellow around neighborhood routes, parks, things like that. I actually wanna open that up so that small-scale commercial is allowed anywhere in that yellow-ish tan zone. We're talking about insurance sales, hair salons, small offices, home or garage-based businesses. These feel like great entrepreneurship opportunities that can be very home-based and homegrown. And I feel like having them allowed throughout this district could be a great benefit where there could just be a little small corner startup store or shop or office. So that's one direction I would, if council has any other comments about that in a minute. Yep. So my ask is just, I want, I wanna see if there's support from council for this too.
In what area?
The, it's the CMRM housing zone. So the majority of that land area. Yeah. So right now, a small-scale commercial would only be allowed around neighborhood routes. So the green routes, parks, or was it other commercials there?
The blue routes.
What was that?
The blue, is this on? The blue routes around the orange zone and the neighborhood parks.
Yeah. So my desire is to open it up so there's just that flexibility throughout the neighborhood. So there's no ask of staff with that. It's just if council has the support for it too. And then I'll make my other comment, I suppose, about parks and trails. My reaction to seeing this again was, and this felt a little weird too, to, to even share with staff for the first time, is just, are we dedicating too much space for neighborhood parks? There are a couple in particular that I'm drawn to. And it's the, the McKernan Park up near the north. It's kind of in the, in the middle there, right next to Cooper Mountain Nature Park. And the park that's to the northwest of the kink, close to the purple. And the reason why I say those is because there's McKernan Park that, no, Winkler. Winkelman, sorry. Winkelman Park is pretty close up there near McKernan. And there's also the other neighborhood park right near the purple area, near the kink. And my thought is, if THPRT would be open to it, would they support us in helping us provide better trail connection to the east to, to connect to the West Side Regional Trail? And there are a few different routes that that could go through, but I'm just, I'm thinking, if we're able to save THPRT some funds, could they partner with us to make a better trail connection to the east?
Which property are you talking about, Mayor? No, the neighborhood parks are all, would be future acquisitions they could make.
I mean, I share, I share his, weirdly. I know saying less parks is not awesome, but I've been helping THPRT try to acquire land that's gonna double the size of their footprint. So if that happens, that seems like a very unnecessary park. So I agree with you. I, I think that one shouldn't be there. And I think, too, asking them for connectivity on the trail makes a lot of sense. It's a different pot of money. They can't use SDCs for it. So we'd have to probably help them with the federal ask for that. But I agree with that. Yeah, turn it to a grocery store. I'm just kidding.
Well, can I, I mean, I'm, I'm good with that one. Mike, the commercial comment, I just wanted to hear staff's perspective on like what you're asking and what you all think of that.
Well, the, the small-scale commercial component is, it's basically near those three features, the orange zone and the blue streets and the neighborhood parks. It's within like a block. It's very small. You'd have, or a block or two. You'd have businesses that were limited to about 1,500 square feet, which is maybe like two-thirds of a plaid pantry. So they're like supposed to be small businesses. In a structure that's like roughly the same size as you could build a residential as well. So like if you can build a six-plex, you can have a, you can have a, or a four-plex or a, or a two-plex, you could have a small business as well. It's really, I think, up to the council's sort of, I don't know, risk tolerance or like how, if you wanna pilot it in like certain areas or if you wanna try the whole thing. Because there's going to be probably, you know, noises and like, you know, more activity around those businesses, which some residents are sensitive to. So it's kind of like up to the council's pleasure. Like, do you wanna just try the whole thing and see how it goes? Or do you prefer a more limited area that, where, what the proposal is now?
I mean, I'm more inclined to maybe do like a, a more limited area. Although I love the little shopping center off Hart Boulevard. We walked to it from our house. And I don't think that would be allowed in this current setup here if you're saying it can only be the size of a triplex or four-plex. How do we make sure those kind of things, which is what I think Counselor Teeter is, is driving at? Like, how do we make sure those kind of places could, you know, survive in an area like this?
You could do, you could do small-scale commercial on multiple lots in the same area and pull off kind of a similar feel. But it was, it was structured that way because that was the way we could figure out to limit the size of them. Again, to sort of pilot an approach where these things are allowed in neighborhoods where usually, or at least in the last 50 years, they often aren't.
Give us a pitch. What's a happy medium between his ask of everything everywhere and maybe a more pilot?
Well, I mean, there's, there's the current proposal. There's the whole enchilada. We could also just increase the, the distance from those features to make it apply to larger areas. The reason we picked the neighborhood parks and the multifamily and the blue streets is because we thought those would be visible places and places with multiple destinations. So you have the ice cream shop across from the park or like the small store along the neighborhood route as people are driving, you know, to go out or into the neighborhoods. So if we increase the radius, there'd just be more opportunities near those features where we are guessing they would work better.
What's, what's, what are you guys saying? Our counselor, he's up, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead. Oh.
My, my recommendation would be future collector's street, major roadway, future, to develop into a mixed-use commercial zoning, not just entire area. Because you do wanna separation between purely residential to the people walking by and shopping. But if you can expand it into major collector's street that's gonna go through for the future, I could buy that.
Says the guy that owns a business in a house he lives in? Okay. Just trying to figure out, is this like, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really like that. So that's that one. But I had, um, okay, I'll come back to it later.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prig.
Okay, thank you. I hope I, I don't know if I say it on the record, but I always say it in our, in our briefings. And what I love about this plan is that every time you come to us, it is reflective of what you hear from council and the community. And so I really love just that, the, the way that this has changed and evolved has been so responsive to a lot of different stakeholders and audiences. And so I just wanna acknowledge like how much really good work is there. I used to live really close to the one on Hart, near 170th. And it's kind of nice, right? There's a hair salon and a coffee shop and a plaid pantry. And our vet was there. And we would walk our dogs to the vet there. And so, but it doesn't sound like in this plan something like that would be prohibited. I actually think that the design that you have makes a lot of sense because there also has to be enough like density of housing to support like a small commercial situation. So I can get on board with the McKernan Park overlay request from my fellow council members because I agree it's right next to the nature park and hopefully they're going to be getting additional land to expand that. But otherwise, like, I would not change the plan. And I, I'm good with the direction that is here. And I think it's really thoughtful. And there's a really nice balance of, you know, things. Like this is a neighborhood that was, is really well thought out and meant to be a place that if you needed to, you could really get everything you need, you know, pretty close.
Thank you. Yes. Ditto. I completely agree. I just have one clarifying question around tree canopy, which was on slide 10. There's a note about the removal permits only being required if it's more than a limited number of trees. Can you just remind me on what the definition is there for a limited number of trees?
Sure. So I think it's one six-inch tree per 5,000 square feet per lot per year. So if you had, you know, a 20,000-acre lot, then that, I mean, square feet, then that could be four trees.
Got it, okay.
And right now, it's pretty easy to remove trees in other parts of the city, and replanting is not required.
Okay. Yeah. Just last comment on it is from the tree canopy to the natural resources and the collector's streets and the parks and every, we, we've discussed every bit and piece of this thing. And I see a lot of that reflected back, but also the, just the realities that push back sometimes on our perfect vision of what we want it to look like. But this is one that I can actually, I can start to visualize what it would be like to be in that area. And I, that was a breakthrough for me recently. So thank you to everybody who continues to put so much hard work into this.
And I saw Counselor Tib not at Cooper Mountain with her son like three weeks ago. And I walked up behind him and they were talking about this plan. I'm not even kidding. So that, that is what it's like when you're a child of a counselor. Counselor Duggar.
Thank you. I'm gonna echo, it is evolving really well. So thank you for that. Couple things. I'm really torn on what you're proposing. But let me give you my, let me, let me take a step back and give you my ideal. So when I look at the red and the purple, if we have commercial there, it's gonna be big box or it's gonna be something where people drive to in the neighborhood. You know, and that's, that's the reality of living in a suburban community. One of the areas that I think, I think conceptionally I'm with Counselor Teeter on is the small-scale retail. Same with you on the Hart Road, like, but I would go even smaller, right? Like, like I think there's an opportunity when I think of some really cool neighborhoods throughout, especially the East Coast or like the bigger cities or, you know, they have neighborhood-scale retail in almost like village centers where there's like four or five home-sized restaurants and a pub or whatever. And there's not a massive amount of parking. It's literally for those people. Or there's like angle parking in front of it. And I think if we specifically set out to create, let me back up. The reason I, I hesitate to do it everywhere is because that's not gonna concentrate. And we do need a concentration, I think, because when, when businesses are next to one another, it kind of draws. We've seen that in downtown Beaverton and Old Town. And so like, I do, but I do like the idea of more than one of these and like a cluster of like, maybe like 10 or 15 of these lots right next to each other on multiple sites, I think could be really, a really cool place to be for the neighborhood. Because one thing consistently I campaigned on, and I know a lot, a lot of you have, is like, you know, if we're gonna get serious about a climate change, we need people walking and biking to restaurants and things like neighborhood service-level stuff. People aren't gonna do it unless we give them really close options that are really worth walking to, right? And that, that means, that means building a small enough and intimate enough scale that small business owners can actually afford it, right? And the only way we do that is make it small, make it next to each other. And, and like, I've just seen that work out really well in a lot of bigger cities and in East Coast cities and things like that. And even countless examples, when you think of Portland, right? You think of, sometimes you think of St. John's, right? That's a cool little neighborhood center, right? Like, it's a lot of stuff. And, and I wouldn't even go that far as far as like the scale, but like, we could replicate a, a, you know, a little neighborhood downtown or a little neighborhood village center or something in a couple sites. And I think I would be really interested in that because I do think some of the big commercial sites are gonna be more progress-riggy. They're gonna be giant places that you drive to. And that's okay. But just giving people the option to have a few places near there. And, and I don't know spatially what makes sense because there's a lot of slope to that land. But if we could do, you know, two or three of those within walking distance of the majority of the neighborhood, I would be, be really happy with that. The last thing, and I learned this in my briefing, and I don't know if you all know this, the western half of this, the Cooper Mountain area, is actually in the Hillsborough School District, which kind of blew my mind. And so, and so, well, it's, it kind of blew my mind. And so I know you, you had said the BSD, you know, did not have any particular areas they were looking at needing space for schools or, or, you know, like infrastructure callouts or anything like that. Have we checked with HSD for that western half? And, and like, I have a lot of other issues with, with the way that's set up. It's not my decision to make. But, you know, have we, have we thought about the Hillsborough side about that from the school district perspective? that from the school district perspective?
Yeah, we've, we've talked with both the school districts. It's been a while, because the plan's been going on a while, but what we heard was Beaverton didn't think they needed any, Beaverton School District didn't think they needed any land, at least to the time we talked, in their half. They actually have a school site that's just in South Cooper Mountain, so they, they can add a school there if they need to. And then Hillsborough planned to serve that western half with its existing schools, but of course, both of the districts are continually updating their facilities plans, and they adjust them as they need to.
Okay. Because I did, you know, for reference, I did punt that up to our school district to make sure they knew, because I was like, hey, did you know this was happening?
Oh, they know.
Yeah.
People lost their elected jobs over this cover. Like, it's, it's deep.
Yeah, so I punted to them, because I was like, you know, and the person I talked to didn't know about it, she was new on the school board, but I was like, this is something you guys need to discuss, because it is, it's hard for me to like, imagine us meeting our climate goals when we're bussing, or people are having to drive X amount of minutes to get to Hillsborough when you can literally see a Beaverton School District right there, so, and that's all, I'll leave it at that, but, great work on this. I really, this is evolving in a way that is gonna be not only impactful on Cooper Mountain, but I think we're gonna be able to take a lot of stuff that you've worked here and apply it retroactively on the, especially with the tree canopy and things like that on the regular city, so I'm incredibly proud of this work so far. Incredibly proud.
Counselor Kimmy.
Thank you. Every time we have one-on-ones, I always bring up parks, right, where I think it should be usable, not just a bunch of grass, where, where everybody brings their dogs and, you know, it's their nice place, but, you know, a sport court, we could work with the T H P R D to build something that could be used, basketball court, pickleball, pickleball, or whatever that might be, could be used as a gathering place for youth, young kids or adults, or older generation can use the park, not just all the grass. Right now, South Cooper Mountain is just grass or rock garden, like, nobody looks at it, nobody goes there, they just drive by, that's it, and it's unusable, so we like to put that in. And another one is, when you're, what's the difference between Collector Street versus Neighborhood Route?
Yeah, the Collector Streets, as you can kind of tell from the map, are the kind of busier, slightly faster streets that carry people all the way through, from west to east, north to south, and they just carry a little more traffic at like slightly higher speeds. And then the Neighborhood Routes, they connect a couple neighborhoods and like feed folks to the Collector Streets.
Okay, but not all the way.
So they're still pretty like slow, local-type streets. And I, I think one difference is you'll see a lot less on-street parking on the Collector Street, there might be some in like, like the commercial nodes, but like in the other places, there's usually less on-street parking and less access, there's fewer driveways on those, which is actually, I'm kind of sneaking in a point here, but that's actually one reason we didn't put the small-scale commercial on the Collectors, is because we were concerned people could, would see a business, but they wouldn't be able to park, or there wouldn't be a driveway for the business, because it's supposed to be more of a through street and not like a, a street you plug into.
Right, that's where I was thinking, where if we are going with commercial all over or mixed-use, that means people have to park near it and walk, and our sidewalks right now, as I mentioned in one-on-one before, South Cooper Mountain, every single development sidewalk size are different. Some of them are six feet, some of them are three, four feet, so it doesn't connect, where if you're gonna go with multi-use, commercial, mixed-use, then at least the Collector Streets should be able to have a wider sidewalk and somewhat of a street parking available if you're gonna go that route. But either way, right now, as the developers are developing different neighborhoods, there's no consistency in the sidewalk, so I'd like to closely take a look at that, and maybe require, if possible, at least the Collector Streets should be, have a wider sidewalk or whatever, that people can actually walk with their dog or with their kids. Right now, only two people holding hands can walk, and you can hardly pass, so that's my input.
You, we're, we're working on some cross-sections for Cooper, and we'll be bringing those to you later. Those generally set up a minimum dimension, sometimes folks choose to do more, or sometimes there's like more of a shared path where it's bikes and pets and it's a little wider, but we'll definitely have that sort of minimum quality experience for the pedestrians.
Yeah, I'll be quick, super appreciate all of this work, have been with you for a very long time in it. I do support Counselor Teeter's concept of the park, maybe not needing as many, especially if the mayor and T H P R D are able to keep that site. I'm a little hesitant on the extra commercial. I feel like this has been, you know, really planned out by you all, so I'm just, you know, I don't need that. I also think this area is, is very hilly in terms of like being able to build, like, I want that walkable type stuff, but I just imagine when I'm driving around there, how realistic that is. So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm very happy with this map, the way that it looks and the work that you guys have done, so thank you very much.
All right, well, Counselor Teeter, you win some, you lose some, you gotta win and a loss. What do you gotta say?
Okay, I've got one what-if question to throw out there. As in the spirit of compromise, I'm pulling it back a little bit. What if we allowed the small, small-scale commercial along the trail routes as well? I'm picturing somebody owns a home, backs up to one of the trails, maybe they wanna open up a small, like, weekend wine spot, and people can walk or ride their bikes up on the trail, grab a drink out in the green space, and be back on their way, just weekend-type event. What if we did that? Is that something you all would be open to?
You're not a parent yet, but part of the reason I like the trails is I don't have to worry about people coming and snatching my kid from weekend wine shops, so I'm a hard no on that.
I would just be curious on the staff response to something like that.
I think what I'm hearing is, you'd like us to explore a little bit, you'd like to, well, the park thing, it sounds like, we're meeting with T H P R D next week, we should have a conversation about, like, what the priorities are and what...
Tell them they're getting a bigger footprint in Cooper Mountain, they'll be fine.
But, the small-scale commercial, I haven't thought about the trails, I don't know what, I don't know how that would look, but, I mean, should we look and maybe work with the planning commission on whether we could fine-tune that to like get the opportunities a little bit more expanded, or should we just stick with what we've got right now?
I think what we got is, you can stick with what you got, I'm sorry, friend, you gotta win on the board today, but I don't think there's a big appetite for that. I mean, when you're reviewing it, if it makes sense, I mean, we could always adjust, right? As places are going in and things start looking differently, this isn't like something we have to be married to, we can always make adjustments as we go, and we won't really know what the market's gonna do. The market might not support any of these crazy ideas we have, and so that's the other piece that's coming.
I just, if I, my only comment to that was, I see that, and what I see in that is, you're on a bike trail and you're like stopping by somewhere, and I, like, I could get on board with that, so I'll just say that for the record, but obviously, really respect your perspective on this, too.
It also depends, because T H P R D often builds trails like on the power line where none of that would be allowed anyways, so we don't know what these trails are gonna look like, so that's why I think, let's take a look at how it's going.
We do track these things, too, so we can keep it on a post-hearing wishlist, you know, for ideas to revisit.
Awesome.
That sounds good, I appreciate the conversation.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, last agenda item, I just wanna let you know you're keeping me from going home, so any council new business? I was eating dinner when Jenny texted me, and she's like, "Why aren't you here yet?" I was like, uh-oh. Any new business? All right, see ya none, we're done.